This is a special meeting of Glendale City Council. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the June 2, 2020, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from Mayo County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channel charter and the Spectrum, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. You see it on top of the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brodmann?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. What's next, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, June 2, 2020, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Monday, June 1, 2020, on the board outside City Hall.
City manager Yasmin Beers, do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir. In terms of the agenda for the previews, Mr. Galanian can read the agenda previews, if you would like at this time.
Okay. Mr. Galanian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For June 9, 2020, for Glendale Housing Authority meeting commencing at 3:00 p.m., we have one business agenda item from community development regarding approval to appropriate funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. We will have a joint meeting of the city council and the housing authority that afternoon, one report from Community Services and Parks regarding fiscal year 2019, 2020 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act related to CARES Act funding. We will also have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council in the afternoon at 3:00 p.m., one report from Community Development regarding 515 to 523 North Central Avenue, Stage 2 Design Review. For the regular city council meeting commencing at 6:00 p.m., under consent items, report from Finance regarding unclaimed vendor checks and deposits, followed by Community Services and Parks regarding acceptance of workforce innovation and opportunity underserved COVID-19 impacted individuals grant from the State of Employment Development Department to the Verdugo Workforce Development Board, followed by Community Services and Parks regarding elderly nutrition program additional grant funding from fiscal year 1920, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and Meals on Wheels COVID-19 Fund Grant. Finally, under consent, Public Works regarding Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Regional Improvements Project. Under action items, human resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the city and Glendale Management Association and resolution addressing the terms and conditions of said MOU, Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP Water Revenue Refunding Bonds 2020, Public Works regarding contract with T2 Systems Canada for the operation, maintenance, and expansion of the digital multi-space parking meters, Public Works regarding citywide guard rail upgrade project, and finally, City Attorney regarding Hospitality Worker Workforce Protection Ordinance pertaining to hospitality worker recall, just cause discharge, worker retention, and worker safety training. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next.
Next would be City Manager regarding appointment of the Boards and Commission Member, brought to us by Councilman Brodmann. Two-way would be Eli Lester Transportation and Parking Commission.
Mr. Roth, do you want to?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. So I nominated Eli Lester last week, I guess it was, and he, like my other two appointments, I think is a real Glendale treasure. So I just want to mention a couple of things about him that I think are worth stating. And then he has a comment he'd like to make, but he's a passionate advocate for pedestrian and bike issues and for public transit. I mentioned last week that he's been on the Walk-Bike Glendale Board for seven years, and he was their representative to the Citywide Pedestrian Plan Advisory Group. But his interests go well beyond biking and walking. He, during the campaign, taught me a lot about how the built environment affects sustainability, equity, health and safety, and the cohesiveness of the community. And what's interesting is, he goes way back in Glendale. He was born here, but something that's a little bit rare is that his great-grandparents, Fred and Freda Pike, settled here in 1923. And Fred was involved in the construction of what's now the St. Mary's Armenian Apostolic Church on Central Avenue. And Eli's grandfather, Bob, graduated from Hoover High School in 1936. So somebody with a lot of history and a lot of perspective. He's somebody I turn to for advice because he has a level head and he understands both the details and the big picture. So I respectfully ask for my colleagues' support to appoint him to the Transportation and Parking Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Eli Lester. You want to comment, please?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to thank Councilman Brodmann and the rest of the members for this honor. It's a privilege to have this opportunity to give back to a community that I care about and feel a connection to. I moved to Glendale in 1994, and like most people in Southern California, use my car almost exclusively when I needed to get around. I'd pull my bike out for a ride or go hiking in the Verdugos on the weekends, but active transportation usually took the form of recreation. As the years passed, it started changing, though. I lived in three of Glendale's neighborhoods as a renter, and my work commute and routine errands always became a predictable circuit, complicated by frustrating ever-growing traffic congestion. Since this circuit seemed inevitable, whenever a move was necessary, I began looking for a location as close to its center as possible. My car trips became shorter, and I began to be able to accomplish some of my errands on foot and use my bike to commute to my office in Burbank. I was so impressed by the improvements to my quality of life that I began reading about urban transportation, urban and transportation planning, and to follow development best practices. Over this time, I began to feel a growing conviction. Glendale has the bones of a multimodal city, walkable city. This idea is supported by the fact that the city's original subdivisions and commercial corridors grew up within walking distance of the Pacific Electric Glendale Line, and its footprint still defines the city's urban form. The geography is relatively flat, and the city is laid out on a human scale. A more walkable Glendale would be a place where the efficacy of transportation policy would be judged by how well it promotes mobility, movement of people, rather than just auto traffic flow. So what is walkability, and why should Glendale want to cultivate it? Simply put, walkable places are those where walking and biking are safe, practical, and comfortable means of getting around. The reason I believe Glendale should act to increase walkability is that it supports many public goods. For example, walkability promotes a thriving economy, attracts talented workers in foot traffic, and the businesses that rely on them. In terms of public health, active populations have better health statistics and lower healthcare costs, and car accidents are less likely to be fatal to pedestrians in walkable places, an issue of special concern in Glendale. Equity is one. Only a third of Americans drive. Improving walkability gives more independence to children than the elderly. It is poor elderly and non-white pedestrians that are disproportionately struck and killed by cars while walking. Importantly, walkability can build social capital. To quote a famous line, "Consider the difference between running into someone whilst strolling and running into someone in your car." I feel that with thoughtful planning and leadership, Glendale can be a place where people move about more safely and efficiently, whether in a car, on foot, or on a bike, and importantly, that it can develop a more integrated and robust mass transit system that connects our downtown to Metro's regional network. Again, I look forward to this opportunity to help Glendale become an even better place to live, and thank you all.
Thank you very much. So roll call, please. Do I have it, Saki?
No. You don't need it.
I don't need it. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is Councilmember Devine. I'd like to take this opportunity during appointments and commissions to make a blanket appointment of all of my commissioners, so I will take a few minutes to name them and hopefully get a second. Mike Morgan to Historic Preservation, Ashua Grayson Transportation, Chris Welsh, DRB, Chang Lee Planning, Lila Ramirez, CDVG, Stephen Lee, Fire Board of Appeals, Tom O'Shaughnessy, Audit, Trojan Lee Law, Water and Power, Kate Everly, Parks and Rec, Armani Perrion, Commissioner on Status of Women, R. Oshagon, Arts and Culture, and next week I will ask Council to approve these.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Do we need to do that? Because until we didn't remove a person, they say, right?
No, typical practice is to reappoint. If the council member is interested in reappointing, to do a reappointment, as opposed to just letting them stay on.
All right. So maybe roll call, please.
No, no, they have to come back next week.
Next, I'll come.
Yeah, if I can, I just would like to add that I'm very proud of all of my commissioners and appointments, and I'm happy to ask for the reappointment of all of them. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
And so, City Attorney's Office or City Clerk's Office goes through and confirms eligibility in terms of term limit? We have term limits now in terms of being a lobbyist, in terms of registration?
We confirm, we work with the City Clerk's Office, too. And we have been actually, Mr. Devine reached out to us on a couple of them just to confirm that they hadn't reached term limits, and so on a number of those, we've already confirmed that. And so we'll work with the Clerk's Office to verify the rest of them.
So that's on the attorney or City Clerk?
We work together. So we'll, we'll make sure we've, yeah, we work with.
If I have to blame someone, I blame the right person for any mistake. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
My apologies also. Yes, sir. Since we're talking Boards and Commissions, on May 5, the city council appointed Mr. Ted Flanagan to the GWP Commission. At that meeting, in response to Councilmember Najarian's question, I stated that there is no open contract with EcoMotion, whose president is Mr. Flanagan. To set the record straight, although at the time the existing contract with EcoMotion had not yet been terminated, all the tasks that are expected from EcoMotion team had been completed to the city's satisfaction. Within the next couple of weeks and upon processing the final invoice, the contract will be terminated. So I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear and everybody was on the same page so that I didn't misspeak in any way. Thank you for that, sir.
So when the contract is over, does the person have to wait for a year until they are appointed, or right away they can join?
They can. We had looked at it through the City Attorney's Office.
He wasn't a lobbyist. It was just somebody who had a contract with the city.
Contract with the city, so as soon as the contract is over, everything is done?
Well, technically, there wasn't a conflict, as long as that particular individual wasn't involved in anything related to his or her contract, which wasn't the case. I mean, they were involved in advising staff on unrelated, well, related, but unrelated issues as it pertains to the commission. So there, you know, the commissioner's been appointed, and as Ms. Beers just noted, there was some work to be completed. That wasn't a conflict. She was just clarifying the record based on the statement that had been made at the prior meeting.
You mentioned about lobbies. So if there is lobbies, then how that will affect the term limit?
Well, as you know, well, it's not a term limit issue. It's an issue of whether they can be appointed to a board of commission. And as you know, the council adopted a rule last year prohibiting lobbyists, those individuals who are compensated to request legislative or administrative action before the city council or any of the boards or commissions, that they, those lobbies are not permitted to be boards or commissioners, board members or commissioners.
More elected officials.
Or in other boards or. Correct.
I just want to, I wanted to review what the rules and regulations. Okay. Now, City Manager for the AT&amp;T, I guess?
We'll have the clerk read the item into the record, Mr. Mayor, initially.
Item 3 is Presentation by AT&amp;T and Charter Communications Regarding the Increased Demand on Broadband and Addressing Impacts to Service.
Yes.
So, Ms. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Today, we only have AT&amp;T with us. Charter Communications will join us at a later date. So Mr. Amir Johnson, I believe, is on WebEx, and will be providing you with an update from AT&amp;T. Mr. Johnson.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Hello? Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
Bad connection.
How's that? Hello?
Let's try it and see how it goes.
Okay. Okay. I apologize, but it's very hard to hear.
Yeah.
And I don't think that is lost on any of us.
Would you try again?
Trying another microphone, I guess, or.
Can you hear me?
It's very, it's kind of muffled and broken.
Okay. Please, come in really quick.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Hello? Is that any better?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
It's difficult to hear.
Yes, it's difficult to hear. We'll have to figure out the connection, Mr. Johnson. What I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, is for us to move on to the next item, and if.
Is this any better?
That sounds a little better.
I called in.
Okay, there we go. That's better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I appreciate that and sorry about that. My name's Amir Johnson, and I'm with AT&amp;T's Excell Affairs Department. I cover the city of Glendale for AT&amp;T. Thank you for having me again. COVID-19 has resulted in countless changes to our daily lives. Californians are working and learning at home. We've seen a significant increase in traffic, including cord network traffic, wireless voice, and texting, gaming, instant messaging, consumer home voice, and Wi-Fi calling. Across the country, cord network traffic is up 20% to 25% compared to similar days in 2019. Our Wi-Fi calling is also up 70% to 75% compared to those similar days in 2019. In April, video accounted for nearly half of all mobile network traffic, while social networking and web browsing remain the highest percentage, almost a quarter each, of overall mobility traffic. Voice-over IP, including mobile video conferencing, is up 55% compared to similar days in 2019. We've managed to keep people connected as our infrastructure is handling the demand like never before. Despite this increased demand, our overall network is performing very well. Performance for first responders on our FirstNet network has been excellent. Our dedicated employees are working around the clock, installing, maintaining, and repairing our network so our customers can communicate with each other and stay connected to the outside world. As far as COVID-19, the pandemic has created new ways to work, learn, and connect with each other. During shelter-in-place orders, Glendale residents are using smartphones, tablets, laptops, at-home, which all drive the need for reliable and expanded connectivity. With the increased demand on networks, it's important for cities to work with wireless carriers to modernize and update their networks to handle growing capacity needs and data transmission, text, photos, video, internet access, and phone calls. During this pandemic, students are involved in distance learning, which involves using wireless devices to access education applications, emails, video lessons, and communicate with their teachers. During the pandemic, telehealth services are providing a way for physicians and patients to connect through video chat, text, or messaging. From the onset of stay-at-home orders, AT&amp;T has acted swiftly to provide customer relief as well as financial support for initiatives and organizations to help Californians in need. Through June 30, 2020, for residential or small businesses, customers who notify us that they are unable to pay their bills due to disruptions caused by the pandemic, we will not terminate any post-paid wireless home phone or broadband residential or small business accounts. We'll waive any late fees or post-paid wireless home phone or broadband to small businesses, DirecTV customers, as well as U-verse customers. We'll waive domestic post-paid wireless plan coverage charges for data, voice, or text for residential or small business, and we'll keep our public Wi-Fi hotspots open for anyone who needs them. Again, I appreciate this opportunity from the mayor and city council to address AT&amp;T's network and how we've been doing. I could take this moment to answer any questions. Any answers I don't have, I will follow up with staff and make sure I get those to the mayor and council. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Is there any question? Mr. Kusakian?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Johnson for coming and meeting with us and allowing us the opportunity to ask some questions. So you mentioned the increased demand, and I think everyone is experiencing that and seeing that firsthand. And you said that you're able to handle it, but potentially, as work habits are going to change, as there's going to be an increased reliance on using devices that put a strain on the system, what is AT&amp;T doing to increase capacity in Glendale?
Well, as of right now, the network hasn't seen a major hit in the network. From everything that I've seen and that I've received, we have gotten very few complaints on the network reliability at this point.
And along with that, in Glendale specifically, do you know how many outages have occurred since the beginning of March to now, and what the shortest period of time and what the longest period of time for those outages have been?
I don't have that information at this moment, but I will make sure I get that to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So we go to.
I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you for coming and joining us.
Well, let me ask a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
What's the, what's the makeup, what's the market share between AT&amp;T, Spectrum, and any other provider that's out there in the city of Glendale? Do you have that info?
I do not have that info, but I will surely make sure I get that to you, Councilman.
And do you serve all, is this through the U-verse system, or is this another way to get the internet to the homes?
I believe there are various ways to get the internet to the home, and I can get those exact answers for you as well, Councilman.
Because I guess, I mean, just to boil it down, to be frank, many residents are upset that there were outages and very slow speeds from their particular carriers. I'm with Spectrum, and I haven't, I'm not happy with them. I had a technician out, and he did nothing. And it's important for me, especially my, as well as my other colleagues, we have Zoom meetings now and remote conversations, and if those things start breaking up, you're really cutting the line of government. And I'm just, you know, if you have a better product, significantly better, I would like to know, and I will, I will change, but you have to sell us on your product and your reliability and your prices and your speeds and all that other stuff. And I, you know, I wait, this is maybe a continuing discussion that we'll be having. And, you know, I don't have a kid that's challenged, distance-challenged to get to school. Many of the, Mr. Kusakian has Armin, who's on remotely learning and that, so it's become a very important, very important issue now, whereas before, we were just playing games and maybe catching movies. Now, it's integral to the functioning of our society. So, thank you. I hope we can continue this discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. So with the next item, please.
Next item will be city council and staff comments.
Is there any comments by my colleagues?
I would like to actually, oh, does anyone else want to go first?
You can comment in the afternoon, also, I guess. So if you want, leave it later.
There is, well, I'll just ask staff to bring one item back. You know, it's been with the number of graduations taking place and the modified COVID-19 regulation compliant graduations. It's been heartwarming to see what some families are doing for their children, but also driving. I noticed a few Mylar balloon displays, which at first I thought, oh, that's very nice. And then I thought, oh, my God, what's going to happen to those balloons once they go up? and the modified COVID-19 regulation-compliant graduations. It's been heartwarming to see what some families are doing for their children. But also driving, I noticed a few Mylar balloon displays, which at first I thought, oh, that's very nice. And then I thought, oh, my God, what's going to happen to those balloons once they go up into the air? And we know that the Mylar balloons cause a number of outages. And I would like to see staff study and review and bring back proposals and ideas as to how to address this and possible ban of Mylar balloons in Glendale before, you know, the sake of our electric grid. You know, they are particularly, I mean, the other balloons have issues as well, but I don't want to be the complete party pooper. The Mylar ones are, have a particularly dangerous aspect to them because of their metallic coating, which conducts electricity. So if I could get a second from...
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back?
Yes.
They're not sustainable either. I don't think they biodegrade.
No, for sure not.
We'll bring our report back.
All right. Mr. Brodmann?
I have, I have a few things, including, obviously, wanting to talk about what's going on in the world around us. But I may, I'll do a little bit now, and I'll do some tonight, just to break it up. So I'll kind of deal with the most mundane issue first, which is that I attended the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authority meeting last Thursday. And I think it's probably a good idea, and I don't know if we do this regularly, to give a report when we attend these meetings. But, so, just for, for people in the audience, I suppose, I mean, this is an authority that consists of representatives from Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, La Cuenada, Flint Ridge, South Pasadena, and also somebody representing Catherine Barger's office. They're working on a strategic plan, which you may have heard about, but that's been delayed because of COVID. So part of the discussion was just how we're going to move forward with that. There is a plan to move forward with that. It's just going to get delayed a little bit, but there's a meeting on August 6. They're saying it'll be a four-to-six-hour session. So I'll make sure to have a lot of coffee in front of me. But we are going to move forward with the strategic plan. Another thing is that there was an appointment to the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee, and I'm proud to say that I was appointed to that committee. So we will have another Glendale City Council person at SCAG. And energy environment clearly is something that I think about a lot. So I'm excited for that. There was a report on the Metro budget shortfall. I'm not going to talk about that because Councilmember Najarian is on the Metro Board and could speak much more authoritatively about what's going on there. But there was a discussion about impacts potentially to the bus rapid transit timeline. But I will, I will leave that to you if you want to speak to that. There was also a very interesting report on housing legislation. And a couple of things that I had not been up to date on, one of them being that SB 902 Wieners bill, this is kind of the next take on SB 50, has now been changed so that the requirement for us to allow fourplexes in single-family neighborhoods is now opt-in. So we are, that is no longer a requirement in that legislation. And then the other thing was, there was a discussion of Anthony Portantino's bill, SB 1299, which is very, I think, very interesting and very helpful to us. It basically protects cities that convert retail space to workforce housing by covering any loss of sales tax revenues for seven years. So if, for instance, Sears, the Sears property becomes affordable housing, we are not losing all that sales tax revenue, at least for seven years. So I think that's a great approach, and just thought I would share that. So that's the meeting of the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authority. I have one more thing.
Yes, please.
Okay. Then I'll leave the third one for tonight. I want to talk about a sustainability commission and ask for support to set one up in conjunction with hiring of our chief sustainability officer. There's, you know, nothing more fundamental to our jobs than ensuring a livable city for the people that come after us. And we have definitely done some good things. Mr. Zern, who, is he here? No, he's not here. But he told me he expects us to be around 72% zero-carbon by 2024, when some of these new contracts come online. That's, that's pretty impressive. So we are making really good progress on our energy system. But we have a lot more to do and very little time. So we need to work on building decarbonization. And as you may know, the building sector is responsible for more greenhouse gases than our electricity sector, believe it or not, or our power. We also need to work on reducing vehicle miles traveled by making it more viable to walk, bike, and take transit to destinations. And for people that do have to drive, and we're always going to have people that need to drive, we want to put in place the infrastructure to allow people to charge electric vehicles so that they're more comfortable owning them. And, and I think we need to walk the walk in the city by looking at all of our own activities, like converting our own vehicles to electric, getting rid of single-use plastics and food waste, stopping the use of gas-powered landscaping equipment, retrofitting gas heating and cooling to electric. Some of these things I know we're working on. Anyway, I think all these things should be the remit of a sustainability commission. One more thing is that we really need to work on resilience in the face of a warming world. How do we counter the urban heat island effect? How do we make this city bearable and livable and thriving in 20, 30, and 50 years? So I really want a commission of smart, dedicated people who can support the chief sustainability officer, bring good policy ideas to council, and would look for a second from one of my colleagues on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more comment? Okay. I just want to mention what happened in Minneapolis, Minnesota, on May 25. And I came across, I was, years back, I was reporting about the police brutality. At the time, you know, that this happened many times. And at the time, I was relying on a report from U.S. Department of Justice. Fortunately, I went back and found the report. This is a report from June of 1995. It says, physician, asphyxia, sudden death. And in there, in that report, very simply, I mean, there is, this report is, of course, in three pages. They have to treat a person when the officer will arrest and handcuff them. I just want to say, I asked our police chief to come later this afternoon, look through this and enlighten us about, because this is a very important report, in my opinion, which has been put out by U.S. Department of Justice in June of 1995. And there is another one from New York Police Department. I just read this one. I don't want to go through all this report because he may report it better than me. I just read one sentence from New York Police Department. We know New York Police Department is the largest in the country with 35,000 officers, employees, larger than Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and Los Angeles City Police Department. And in there, it says, "As soon as the subject is handcuffed, get him off his stomach, turn him on his side or place him in a seated position." And as we saw on the video in Minneapolis, one officer put his knee on the neck of the person for five and a half minutes. The person died. He did not even quit. Waited until eight and a half minutes until he moved his knee. And then another person was pushing his, I mean, on the middle portion of his body, and the other one holding the feet. I'm really surprised as why this happened. I mean, this is outrageous. So what Mr. George Floyd went through is really outrageous, and I feel bad. I do not know whether we want, he wants to report our chief now or later in the afternoon, I think after 6:00, based on the report which I turned to the police chief. I'm sure he was familiar with this, but however...
Mr. Mayor, oh.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, I wanted, I had some comments too, and I thought maybe we could do all of this in the afternoon or evening. But however you want, you know, however you want to do it, I can hold off.
I was thinking to do it in the afternoon. I just brought it up. If police chief can report this in the afternoon, because we're going to have more viewers at the time than now to listen to you and...
I can, I can address it shortly now, but I will, I will address it later this evening also.
I would say at that time it would be better because they will hear what you have to say that, and we will show that we here and our police department are familiar with this issue. So we are not going to have such a problem. So you can assure the public at the time, I think, will be better. But however...
Yes, sir. We'll have a report, as you stated, this evening, at the 6:00 hour for our council meeting. And the chief will be here with a presentation for the council and the community and answering any questions that you may have.
Okay. So what's next on our item?
Next would be minutes of the special city council meeting on May 5, 2020, and May 12, 2020, and regular city council meeting of May 5, 2020, and May 12, 2020.
Thank you. What's next?
I need it.
Oh, okay.
I'll move the item.
We have, we have second here. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be Public Works regarding Colorado Street and Columbus Avenue Rehabilitation Project. 6A Motion Awarding a Construction Contract to Hardy and Harper Incorporated in the amount of $2,150,000, approving a 10% reserve for contingency, rejecting all other bids, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract.
City manager, Yasmin Beers.
I also, I had one more. Sorry about that. I have item number B, Resolution Appropriating $2,428,800, specifications number 3629, CFDA number 20.205.
Okay. City manager, Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council will go directly to Mr. Emrani, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a project for pavement rehabilitation that involves Colorado Street from San Fernando Road to Central Avenue and a short stretch on Columbus Avenue from Colorado to Broadway. And we had advertised for bids. We received six bids back. And we are recommending the award to Hardy and Harper. They had the lowest responsible bid at $2.150 million, which is slightly above our engineer's estimate of $2,147,500. The scope of work includes resurfacing, grinding, and overlay of deteriorated pavement for these sections, also repair of broken and damaged sidewalks, curbs, gutters, installation of new curb ramps, planting of new trees, and couple of traffic signal modifications. And we're also reconstructing 121 linear feet of damaged sewer mains. This project is federally funded by Surface Transportation Program local funds as well as gas tax and some water depreciation funds. So at this point, we're respectfully recommending the award of the contract and be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question from my colleagues? Roll call, please.
The item?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I move it.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
The resolution appropriating $2,428...
Roll times are moved together, I think.
They're together?
Yes.
So we have it then. What's next, please?
Next would be denial and findings of 340 North Central Avenue, Stage 1 and 2 Design Review, case number PDR 1920855. Motion denying combined Stage 1 and 2 Design.
Mr. Mayor, before my colleagues and you deliberate or vote on this item, I'm again recusing myself for the reasons previously stated. One of the parties involved in this had made a contribution to my campaign, was a longtime city design review board member, someone I'd known previous to my elected positions. But I'm recusing myself now under our rules, and we'll return when you are done. I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just briefly, and I know, actually, I think Mr. Malikian is calling in to speak on the item. So this is the findings. The council held a hearing on May 12 on this project, directed that findings be prepared relative to a denial and deny findings supporting that denial. So those findings are before you. The hearing is closed. So I know Mr. Malikian intends to speak, and then you also have a couple of letters that were submitted to you earlier this morning. And because the hearing is closed, the council cannot take new evidence. I can only decide whether or not to adopt the findings. And if the council was desire, did desire to have additional input or evidence submitted into the record, they would need, would need to continue the item so that the hearing could be re-noticed. So with that, I'll submit to you. And again, I do know that Mr. Malikian is on the line to speak on this particular item.
Okay. Before, I just have a problem with the way we are dealing with projects. I mean, as a professional engineer, in my life, all the time, we were presenting Phase 1 of a project before we proceed to Phase 2. Phase 1 will be the simple ideas that you know what is going to come in that place or that property, what they're going to do with that property. And later, we would go after we get preliminary approval that how big it's going to be, how many floors. This was schematic drawings they would present, not detailed drawings. They come forward with Stage 1 and 2. I don't know. I complained. I guess the day I became councilmember, I complained. Still, we are doing the same thing. We, people spend money, lots of money, probably, going forward with the project, and then they come forward and we say yes or no. In my opinion, we have to go back to what they are doing in the industry. First, the person should come with basic facts, what it's going to be on that property, how it's going to generally will look like, how big it's going to be, how many floors we're going to have. I mean, very basic information should come forward and council to approve it. And then they have to proceed with the project. That's my opinion. But however, I go to the caller and... You are on the air? With city council members and the mayor?
Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian and councilmembers. I just want to comment on the motion that has been filed. First of all, this agenda item was supposed to be scheduled for June 30. So we were planning to prepare proper response. And by finding out on Friday that this is going to be scheduled on Tuesday, we struggled, and we managed to find contacts. And we met with the council people this morning, as well as the project team has reached out to the property owner. And we've listened, and we have heard what their understanding was for the project. We've given them all the facts and so forth. So there's very minor mitigations, which are dust control and other things that it can be implemented, that we have agreed on that. Also, I wanted to bring up three items that are in the motion that I think should be really carefully looked at. First item that in the motion is based on the historic, that this building is historic. In the body of the report itself, it says that it is not a historic building. It is an eligible historic building. By making a building a historic, it has to go through a process. So considering this building a historic building, I do not believe that is true, and it should not be taken into consideration. Being that it is eligible, that should be the part that has to be highlighted. The second thing is that it's, the report indicates that, the motion indicates that this project will have a visual impact. This project is an urban development. This building is going next to an existing building on an urban setting. So the impact of this building is... So the impact of this building is, is undeniable, we cannot avoid that, being that at the location that is. And lastly, by the report, they're indicating that we have to provide a access so for the maintenance. In our opinion, this is a de facto easement and a taking of our property. You cannot force somebody to come onto our property to be able to maintain the adjacent property that has been built on that. I have a question for council members and everybody else. How is this project any different than the project that went next to the Crusoe Building, the Musonie Temple? Or how is this project any different that the build, the Hyatt Building, which is substantially taller and bigger, that went next to a brick building just down the street on 210th Central Avenue? Judging from the totality of the circumstances, it is clear to me that some of the council members have already made a decision on how they are to vote, and are now looking for findings to support this decision. It is very interesting to note that the findings to deny are not coming from the city planning department, which we 100% agree with planning, which the subject matter, which they are the expert. I rather counsel that ask the city attorney's office to come up with a findings to deny this project. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just briefly address?
Mr. Garcia.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of procedural, I guess, comments. It's generally the case when council has heard a matter on an appeal, or in the first instance, like when you sit as the designer review board, and the council has, continues an item to direct the preparation of findings, it's, it's always directed for our office to provide them so that we can ensure that they, they meet legal muster. This, the, the findings are based on the council deliberation that occurred on May 12th. So we, we took what we heard, put them into, into findings, and made sure they, they had the appropriate reference to, you know, the, the council's concern about the, and, and Mr. Malikian is right on that point, it is potentially historic. So if somebody is inclined to make the motion, that it, the references to it being historic should be changed to potentially historic, or, or, I shouldn't even say potentially historic, it's, it's listed as eligible for historic designation in the survey. And so that's, that's why the silence before, the council had this deliberation and discussed these policy issues, and was not in favor of approving the project with respect to the allegation, or the contention that council is imposing easement here. All we, we note is that the council was of the mind that there should be a setback. There's no requirement that there be an actual easement granted to any particular party. So from that particular point of view, we wouldn't have viewed this as an exaction. We'd, we viewed as a setback, which the council has authority to do in the designer review. Whether this is the proper decision from a planning perspective, that's not our role, that's planning gave you their advice, and the council made the decision after looking at all, at the entire record. With that, happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Next caller, please. You are with city council members and the mayor and the staff. You are on the air? Hello? Hello? We, you are on the air, please. You are on the air, please? This is what I do every day.
Hello?
Yes, we, you are on the air.
Oh, thank you very much. Is this, this agenda item, on the Agenda 8, on the, on the moratorium?
No, no, no.
Okay.
This is on item 7. If you want, you can wait, pretty soon we get to that item.
All right, thank you.
You are on the air with the mayor and city council members?
Mayor, it looks like caller number 2 and number 3 are for item number 8.
Oh, how about there was line 1? Also, I don't know, do you have the line 1? I had it here a little bit earlier, but I guess.
And line 1, Mr. Malikian?
I'm sorry?
Hello?
I think that's it, line 1 was for, was Mr. Malikian.
Oh, yes, yes. I just want, just a quick comment on Mr. Garcia's note regards to the setback. That is true, that can be placed on the property. But again, in order for anybody to come and repair the building, they have to come into our property. So that means an easement has to be placed on our property for them to access our property. So if, if we don't allow somebody to trespass on our property, how can they come and take care of the property, even if we have the setback or not? So that, to me, is the definition of taking and de facto easement. That is why I suggested, and I, and I'm emphasizing that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just one other item I forgot to mention initially was, in terms of the timing, I'm not sure where the June 30th date came from. Mr. Najarian made the motion to continue it for two weeks. Two weeks was actually last week, but we didn't have a meeting, so that's why we're here this week.
Okay. I guess line 2 and 3 are...
They're for another item, Mr. Mayor.
For some reason.
No, Mr. Mayor, they're for another item.
They're, they're for item number 8, yeah.
I'm sorry, say again?
They are for the next, those callers are for the...
No, I know, I know. I'm trying to disconnect the line 1, and I'm unable to do it. Oh, thank you. All right, is there any comment on this item? Yes, please, Mr. Najarian.
We, you know, we had our discussion three weeks ago, was it?
May 12th, yes.
May 12th. And I definitely did not have my mind made up about this. I came into this with an open mind. I had not seen the plan, plans, or the renderings until the, the Friday before the May 12th meeting. And I just didn't think that the, that the building was appropriate in its size and massing and design at that point. And that's why I, that's why we had our discussion, I mean, we discussed those items. I don't have any issue with the findings, except to modify the reference to it being a... You know, it's historic with a small h, I'm not sure if planners make the distinction in that, but let's not, let's not make it what it's not, it's not a capital H historic.
It's not a designated resource, that's correct.
Right. And I just think it's a, it's a tight fit, I think it is not compatible with the, with that neighboring building. I spoke to the, to the council general this morning, as of 11 o'clock. He was, you know, really in the dark about this project. And I think if there was any outreach, that should have been done months ago, not the day before we adopt the findings. The, the hearing is closed, it's inappropriate to discuss the merits of the decision unless there's a motion to reconsider. I'm not ready to do that, you know, I, I'd like to see a new design, and I will entertain any reasonable design that's different and slightly downsized from what we saw May 12th. So I would move, of course, I know there, there may be more discussion, but just for, to put it on the table, I would move the item at 4C1.
Is there any other comment?
Regarding historic designation.
Is there any other comment? Okay. Ms. Devine, do you have any comment?
No comment.
Okay. I just, the way we are discussing, something should be in that property, in my opinion. I didn't see, I'm still baffled that we outright denied it, and we didn't give a direction that what they have to do. What is it that we are against? I spoke to council general also this morning, and they were unaware, apparently the applicants, they met the council general, they brought to their attention, but they, they said that they have to review this. Because my worry is that there was a balcony in there that, in the council general's property, even president of Armenia been there in the yard, in the backyard, and prime minister of Armenia, president of, the governor of Karaba, been there. So having a balcony right next to the council general's property, I thought that is, that shouldn't be. They have to consult with the council general's office. But however, to outright deny the project, I have problem with. We have approved so many projects that it was, I mean, there was historic building on San Fernando Road, and this council voted to demolish that building. And they made this giant apartment building, which had more probably elements in that building, which was historic than this, the council general's building. But however, I don't know how this has been denied. I was hoping that we will consider a Phase 1 for this project, and let them go ahead and bring basic items to us, and see if we are in agreement with them. To deny them outright, it baffles me.
Can I just make two points on that, because I just want the record to be clear?
And Ms. Devine is on line 2, wants to say something, maybe will impact on your, what you want to say.
Well, I wanted to respond to what you said, but okay, I'll wait for, I'll wait for Councilmember Devine.
Ms. Devine, you want to wait until Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I will.
She will wait.
So that's certainly something you can do, not today, you'd have to continue for us to bring that back, but you can do that. In fact, I think it was suggested that was an option for you. But the only other thing, I just want to make clear, if you do deny the project, if you do adopt these findings, denying the project, I don't think any, I don't think I heard from any council member, you don't want anything to be built there. I, what I heard and what these findings reflect is that you don't like this design, and that, that you think that additional sequel review is necessary, that's all this is saying. It's not saying you can't build here, and I, and I, that record needs to be clear on that, because that's not what this is. This is denying this design and a finding by the council that some additional sequel review is necessary.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Devine.
Okay, so, thank you. So when I heard Councilmember Najarian say, you know, I'd like, you know, there should, it's okay to build something there, let's come back with another design, then it, it seems that we are in, we are, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we are in favor of there being something built there. I, I don't see how we can deny a property owner actually building on the property. I, myself, I would like to hear from the council general. I don't know how much weight is put on the consideration by a property owner when it comes to their, you know, if it is a possible historic resource. But if there's any way that he would agree with it, and that they would be able to ensure that there would be no damage to this property, then I, I, you know, I would be in favor. So I'm in favor of bringing this back and, and looking at this, and maybe Mr. Malikian can redesign the balcony that, that you're concerned about, Mr. Mayor, and bring in information for us that ensures that this historic or possible historic site, or eligible historic site is preserved.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna comment, but I, I have to respectfully disagree. I think it really doesn't matter whether the two property owners agree on what they want to do there. I think the reality, the reason I objected to it is, it's a potential historic resource, there should be a sequel review. It, it, the project has a, I forget the wording exactly, but potentially significant impact to the visual setting, or something like that. You could probably help me with the wording, but...
That was, that was language that was in the report yesterday.
Okay, and I think that triggers a sequel review. So I don't want to see an empty lot there, I want to see something that's nice. And I think Mr. Malikian can probably come up with something that, that is nice, and that would be an asset to the city, and I'd be eager to approve of something, but I think we need to, you know, we do have this historic resource, we need to just go through the right process, doesn't mean we can't build there. But I don't think it's, it's a matter of two neighbors deciding that, you know, we can do X, Y, Z, and they agree, and it could be done. This is a part of, this is the city's historic resource, not the council general's historic resource. So anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
But I was, that, that was my question, Councilmember Brotman, was how much weight would he have in this project? Uh, Mr. Malikian, I have a question for you, if I may?
I guess he's not...
Is he, is he still on?
No, he's not on, no.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I have a...
Yes.
I have a procedural issue, I guess it's a point of order. We made our decision May 12th to deny this. These findings are, I don't want to call them routine, but they're administrative findings, is it fair to call them that?
I think the point you're trying to make is it's not the time to take new evidence.
Right, so, so when Councilmember Devine or any of us asks other questions, can you make it smaller? Can you get to the access, you know, what do you think about its historic nature? I don't think that's, I think we're out of line in pursuing that, unless there's a motion to reopen this, and by a three-vote margin reconsider the item. Am I, I mean, where am I in that, am I being too tight with the...
No, no, actually, I think it is a concern, Councilmember Najarian, because again, the hearing was closed. Really, the point for any speakers is to speak on the findings, which Mr. Malikian, in fairness, did. But to inquire of additional information that might change the council's mind, that would require, at a minimum, doing, having a new hearing to hear the, hear that new information.
Well, then I'd like to reopen the, the hearing on this project, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? I, I can't second it. Is there, can we?
We, just procedurally, so...
There was a motion, though.
To, a couple of things, yeah, there was a motion, which I guess you can treat, we can treat it as a substitute, which, there's, that's another discussion point. But to reopen the hearing, in our view, you can re, move to reopen it, and then we'd have to then continue this so that we can notice that, that reopened hearing. So that's certainly, but we would need, you would need three of you today to do that, to ask that the hearing be reopened, and then we'd have to do a notice, and then bring that back.
Would you?
So I have nothing else to say, except I'm, I'm a little...
Hesitant?
No, hesitant isn't the word. If there were discussions after the, after our May 12th, and information given to other council people, I think those council people have an obligation to let us know, am I, am I correct in that? I mean, the, this is an extra judicial communication that we should all be...
I think to the extent that it's being, it's, if there's any ex parte communications that are influencing a council member's decision or discussion, then that would be disclosed at the time of the hearing, now the hearing's closed. And so again, if we want to have a further discussion on the merits of the case, the quest, the, the hearing should be reopened, continue to a future date so that noticing can be done, and then council can have that additional information.
What was the vote?
It was 4-0.
Okay, so something's going on, obviously, here. I, I'm not sure what's going on, but from 4-0, now we're apparently to 2-2.
Of course, I have to mention that when I was along with the other three, I said I have no choice. This is, you don't need my vote, so I better join. That was the reason I joined.
I thought you meant...
And nobody, the architect and property owner did not get back to me, I did not speak to them. I just, trying, I want to see a building there, and if we can modify it, do something, I'm ready for it. I just don't want to outright to cancel a project. Maybe we can consider as Phase 1, that there is a building and the square footage.
That would have to be moved and, and brought back again. That part wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily need to reopen the hearing, but you still need to re, if you want to do that, you have to continue it so that we can prepare that motion for you that wasn't on the agenda for discussion today. It was to adopt the findings to deny the project. But again, right now you have a motion to reopen the hearing, my suggestion is you take a vote on that. If that doesn't pass, then the council can then take a, you know, take a...
Go back to my motion.
Come back to your motion, which is to adopt the finding.
Which is not seconded, but...
Okay, can we reopen?
The, no, so it was Ms. Devine's motion, you seconded it.
Yes.
This is to reopen.
Right.
And I think we're ready, unless there's other discussion, I think we're ready.
I mean, I'm considering this as Phase 1, what they brought forward.
Correct, but I think before you have that discussion, the council needs to have a vote on whether or not to reopen the hearing.
Mayor, Amir.
I guess, Mr., yes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as I understand, some of the, the problem with the project has to do with the proximity of the northern facade, and the way that it impacts the property to the north. If you were to approve phase one, stage one design, you would, in effect, be approving that which you objected to. So I, as Mr. Garcia said, if you'd like to have that come back with a different design, addressing some of the issues that you had concern with, we could do that, but we should renotice all of it.
Okay, I guess, so where we are now, Mr. Garcia?
We need to take, we need to take a vote on the motion to reopen the hearing.
Reopen.
I'm sorry?
To reopen?
Correct.
Motion to reopen. Okay, Ms. Devine?
I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, we just go, we have Mr. Jimmin take the, take the roll call vote on whether or not to reopen the hearing.
All right, Mr. Jimmin. Roll call.
Councilmember Bottman?
Can I just make a, a comment before I, I just, I just want to say, no. We looked at this, what, two or three weeks ago? I haven't seen any evidence that's different from what I saw three weeks ago, so I vote no.
We just reopen the issue, right?
No, this is a motion to consider whether to reopen the hearing. And Mr. Bottman voted no.
No, but I just want to be clear, when we say we want to open the hearing, means that we still can tell them this is not proper, they have to change it to make it different. Am I right?
Well, you can do that as part of reopening it, or if the council were to deny the, adopt the findings, deny the project, council members can still give their individual opinions on what they'd like to see when it comes back subsequently. There's nothing preventing council members from doing that. But, you know, I, I think it's, it behooves us to try to move this along. The motion, Mr. Najarian made the motion to adopt these findings, denying the project. Councilmember Devine made a substitute motion to reopen the hearing. We're at the point where we're voting on that, that substitute motion, and if it doesn't pass, then it goes back to Mr. Najarian's motion.
No, but I just want to understand, when we say reopening, doesn't mean that we're accepting what they brought forward?
Correct. You're just opening the hearing to reconsider it again.
Yeah, just to discuss it.
Correct.
Reconsider.
But, but, and what Mr. Bottman is saying is that he doesn't feel the need to do that, because he hasn't seen any new evidence that's going to change his mind. And so that's...
It means, then, that means that there should be no building in there.
That does not, not what it means. That's not what it means. What he's, what I've heard from all the council members, that they, they would like to see a project there, or don't have opposition to a project there. They don't like this design, and, and certain council members also express concern about the level of environmental review. That's all we're saying. We're not denying forever a project going there. We're denying this design from moving forward.
Okay, anyway, let's go with the roll call then.
Councilmember Devine?
Yeah.
Mr. Najarian?
No.
And Mayor Agujanian?
Yes.
Mayor, you do have two phone calls on the line, line two and four are...
Mr. Mayor, hold on, before you take that, you had a number of speakers, you can, it's your discretion, but again, I'm not sure who the speakers are, but you, you've taken the speakers, and now you're, we're in the middle of taking action. It is, I don't want to say improper, but highly unusual to keep going back and forth once the council's in action mode, and considering motions and adoption, and all that sort of thing. Again, it's up to you, but we will be in a lot of back and forth if we're doing this, and I, my recommendation is to try to move forward.
In any event, the motion, the Devine motion to reopen fails.
Correct.
Therefore, on, on the floor is...
Your motion.
My motion.
Which I would like to second.
You already did, but...
I don't think he's seconded it, so...
All right.
That's to adopt the findings with the modification regarding the historic building.
Okay, then roll call, I guess.
Right, right.
Councilmember Bottman?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
I don't know?
Did you say no?
I said no.
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agujanian?
No.
So where we are now, Mr. City Attorney?
That motion didn't, is a tie, didn't pass, and is, as, and you know, a tie vote on the, on the primary motion on the agenda item, carries over to next week's agenda, unless council members change their mind. I don't believe that Mr. Kasaki can participate, because it's not, you usually can't invoke the rule of necessity to break a tie. So unless council members are inclined to change their mind at this point, we'll bring it back. We can figure out if there's additional information that might be useful, if council changing their mind one way or the other.
What happens if we, you postpone it for, let's say, two, three weeks later, and applicant to modify his position?
Again, the council will have to have, the council will have to reopen the hearing to do that. Why don't we do this? I need to, I need to look at what happens now with the two to tie. Under the charter, it has to come back next week, it has to be on the agenda next week, doesn't mean council has to have a discussion, but it does have to be on the agenda for next week. And we'll put it on the agenda, and then we'll see what other options there are. Maybe the council will choose to reopen the hearing and have that additional discussion. Just want to remind every, that's it.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Mr. Bott?
Ask a question. So if we were to accept the finding, to deny the project, there's nothing preventing the property owner or the architect to come back in a month, two months, or whenever, with a new project, and we can approve that project. So we're not denying it, saying, you know, we're condemning forever that piece of land. There can be a new project on the table, and we'll look at it afresh, and we'll make a decision. So I think we discussed this, we came to a conclusion, we agreed, and in my opinion, we just move on. And I sincerely hope that they come back with another project.
And I agree with Mr. Bottman, and to incorporate your wishes, Mr. Mayor, we could say that the next step in a new project at this site be a phase one, where they do not spend the detailed, I mean, the, I mean, it costs money, let's not, let's not kid ourselves to do that. But to come with the stage one, and the reason, I was going to answer you, the reason we went to stage one and stage two is because we wanted to streamline our processes, if I'm not mistaken, to not put so many hurdles in front of a project. But I have no objection with your recommendation on this piece of land, that the next step upon a resubmit will be a stage one, to be a little more of a work, workshop, planning workshop or design workshop, to get it to where we have at least three council members comfortable with it.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please, Ms. Devine.
What, what is the difference then between reopening this and letting Mr. Malekian come back with changes, or more information, or suggestions, than, you know, letting him come back again in another, what, month or so? I mean, I don't, I don't see the difference between reopening and denying at this point, if we're going to let him, welcome him to come back with new design, or whatever the other two council members are agreeing to.
I think there's a difference. First of all, we have to honor the, the process that we have here. And we had our discussion with the, with this project back in May, at a four oh vote, regardless of Mr. Agujanian's reasoning to vote yes, it was a four oh vote. Now we're backtracking, and I'm confused as to what's going on here, to be quite honest. I just, I don't know. I'm wondering what's going on here. They're certainly welcome, as Mr. Bottman said, to, to resubmit. We can invite them to commit less engineering work and come back with a phase one, and people can comment on that at this point, and move forward. But, you know, we, we talked about this at length, this was not a short hearing that we had, May 12th, and I'm not in favor of just throwing that away and opening it up again.
Okay, so where we are, this will come, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I, I understand what Mr. Councilmember Najarian is saying, let's make sure that the next project, that we need the EIR or SEQA report, so that we can make a, a decision that we're comfortable with.
And maybe we should ask for the, again, back to what you said, before we get to phase one and two, and everyone's all in, let's, let's take it in smaller steps, where we can talk about these things, and throw out the SEQA issues, and have the public comment, and Historical Society, or whoever is particularly, you know, the consulate, give their comments, and do it that way, rather than be so vested at this point, that it's, it's very difficult to, I understand it's difficult to say no, deny the project, after they've done this much work.
Yeah. The only thing we, I'd add, and I'm not sure if Mr. Landstein was going to add a comment too, was the, the environmental review, whether we do a negative declaration, or MND, or whatever, you do the initial study, and you determine the level of, of review you have to do. That's done in, in connection with a project approval under SEQA, and for, for our purposes, a project approval is, is stage one and stage two together, not, stage one is, we treat it as sort of a concept design, council's not approving anything, so that's one...
We can certainly foreshadow...
Right.
The necessity.
Certainly look at those issues, and if the count, and I believe that the applicant still has the choice technically to do phase, uh, stage one and two together, or just stage one by itself. We will certainly encourage them to do stage one, because that's what you're hearing, we're hearing from the council, that they prefer to see a high-level conceptual design before we get into the nitty-gritty.
And I was just going to add, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that if it is the council's direction that you would like to see stage one, we can bring that decision, that discussion back as part of our design review discussion with the DSP. And then you can weigh in. If you'd like the, the process to be, you must have stage one first, so that you can see it. Mr. Garcia is correct, that we did give that option to the developer, and they knew that they would have to spend the amount of money to get it to a final design, they knew they would have to do all their environmental review, and there was the potential that you, as the design review board, might reject that. That was a risk that they were going to take. Again, we can, if you would like, we can have that discussion as part of the DSP design review.
Okay, let's do it at a later time now.
We'll hear back from the city attorney in a week or two, as to where, how do we go?
Right, well, all I can tell you is, we'll have this on the agenda next week, in terms of this project, because the council has not adopted the findings, and we'll give you some options.
Thank you. So what's next?
Next on it would be COVID-19 update, extension of public orders on commercial eviction, moratorium, and face coverings. Eight-day resolution modifying and extending public order relating to moratorium on commercial eviction. B resolution, extending public order pertaining to face coverings.
Thank you, who's reporting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, every couple of weeks, we bring information to the city council related to COVID-19 and the pandemic that we are in the midst of. This afternoon, we have Chief Lanzas, who will provide you with updated numbers. We do have one of our doctors on the line with us, I hope still, to provide any information related to any of the science behind any of the questions that you may have. And after that, we will turn it over to Mr. Garcia, who also has information related to the moratorium that are in place, related to face coverings and the commercial side. So with that, we'll go to Mr. Lanzas.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Lanzas, your fire chief. As I have done here for the past few months, I would like to provide some updated information and some updated numbers on the coronavirus, COVID-19, as they look worldwide.
Do I have that, or you just?
Uh, the presentation, I'm not sure. Was it passed?
Yeah.
You guys have it?
Yeah, it's, it's very short, Mr. Mayor.
We don't have copies.
All right, that's fine. I just wonder, maybe I'm the only one doesn't have it, so.
I would like to mention, as Ms. Beers mentioned, we do have Chief Medical Officer from Dignity Health, Glendale Memorial, Dr. Wang on the line, who's available to answer any questions should any present. As has usually been the case, when I make these presentations, the, the information changes from the time that I printed them, and today I printed them this morning, some new numbers just came out for today, which I will share as we go through this presentation. Currently, the confirmed cases worldwide is 6.3 million cases. The deaths from COVID-19 are over 372,000 worldwide. Cases have been confirmed in 188 countries, which is one up from last presentation that I made. And the confirmed cases in the United States are 1.8 million plus. The confirmed cases in Los Angeles County is 115,000 plus, and the deaths are, let's do some quick math, because the number just increased for today by 60. So originally, it was 4,222, so today, we're at 4,282 deaths in Los Angeles County. The confirmed cases in Glendale went up by five today, so we are at 990. I would like to mention, and something that I think is worth mentioning, that I have not done in the previous weeks, is I've been somewhat hesitant to speak about the somewhat flattening in the city of Glendale. I think that I'm, I'm more comfortable now speaking to that, based on what I have seen since my presentation on the 19th of May. Since the 19th of May, which is 14 days ago, we have stayed fairly well below 10 cases, 10 new cases per day. We've had four days of those 14 where we were above 10, which I think is good compared to what we were doing previously. The county, however, is not looking so good. They have expanded their testing quite significantly. The Dodger Stadium testing facility is now at about 8,000, testing capacity of 8,000 per day, and across the county, they are able to test up to 20,000 people per day. So there's significantly more testing, which would, you would assume, would result in significantly more positivity. However, here in Glendale, I will say, one case is too many for me, but I do feel that over the past two weeks, we have seen somewhat of a flattening, and I will show that in an illustration here in a few minutes. Our confirmed deaths in the city of Glendale is 83. And we are the third highest city with the most cases, and again, these numbers were not including today, so this was when we were 985, when I wrote these numbers, but Long Beach was number one with 1,990, East LA was 1,098, and then, as I just mentioned, we were at 985, and now we're at 990. Pasadena is number four, 928, and San Pedro at 916 cases. This graph, which I showed...
I'm sorry. Why don't we ever get statistics from Burbank?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Burbank, why don't we ever get statistics from Burbank?
I don't have Burbank's numbers with me. I could look them up here on my phone in, in a minute, and tell you what they are. They're, you know, Burbank is, is significantly a smaller city than us, and I think their numbers have, have been significantly lower reported than our, than ours.
I'm sorry.
I usually, I usually try to report on the, the top five or so cases.
The city of Burbank, Councilmember Devine, as of today, is at 405.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please. Mr. Bott?
I'm always concerned when, when the reporting is total numbers, because of different population sizes, and people misunderstand, and they think we're doing, you know, oh my God, you know, we're the third highest. So could you tell us, do you have what, what it is adjusted for population and age?
I do. I have the age-adjusted number, and I will show that.
Per hundred thousand is what you can compare.
Yes, I have the age-adjusted numbers on a slide that I will share here in a few minutes. So this slide, as you could see, I've shared several times, and through yesterday, you can see that there is a significant, the, the blue line is the seven-day average. As you can see, that is a downward average. That, that average is going down, which was not the case two weeks ago, when I, when I presented, and four weeks ago, when I presented, and so on, and so on. So I, I think that we are on a good trajectory within the city. The county, not so good, as I mentioned. You could tell that their line continues to rise, and I do not see a flattening of their numbers in Los Angeles County, as you could see through their seven-day average. This next illustration, again, is one that I have shown over the past month or so, and And if you recall, I do believe four weeks ago, we were the top line. We are illustrated as the red line in this depiction and the positive cases per 100,000 people. A month ago, we were the top city or the top jurisdiction shown in this illustration and we are now the fourth behind LA County, Pasadena and LA City. So again, and if you look at that red line, I see a flattening of that line. I definitely think that that line illustrates somewhat of a flattening. I'm not ready to claim victory, but I do think that there is somewhat of a flattening that resembles that line. This next slide, again, shows that we are doing well, that our city is trending in a downward or a negative trend compared to others. Previously, we were the second highest in the illustration to your left, the percent of population testing positive. We are now the second lowest behind Pasadena, Los Angeles City, LA County, us, and then Long Beach. So our positivity rating is 0.475%. And then, as Councilmember Brotman requested, the depiction on the right shows the age-adjusted. And one correction that I must make, two weeks ago, I estimated that we had 250 cities or areas that were shown in this and there's actually 325, which is a good thing. And we are number 153 of those 325 with our age-adjusted rate at 396. And those that are listed above are the highest, top 10 areas as shown in Los Angeles County. So I guess I bring a bit of good news. I think that we are doing well. I think that our community has done well to listen to the orders and the recommendations of both this council and the CDC. And I think that these numbers show it. I think we still have work to do. I worry about, you know, the opening of more and more businesses will obviously attract more and more people out in the community, so we must be careful. We must wear our mask, maintain our social distance, maintain our hygiene and continue to watch out for each other. In general, I will tell you that I see people taking it seriously. I see very, I have seen very few people out and about that are not wearing their mask. It does appear that most of the people that are not socially distancing are family members or people of presumably a household that are living together. So I think that we are on somewhat of a good track. The last slide that I will share with you is, again, one that I've shown that does, again, show that walking and driving has certainly increased and continues to rise. The walking throughout LA County has actually peaked right about May 30th above the baseline and then driving is still on an upward trajectory and transit is still somewhat below baseline. I'm available for any questions, as is Dr. Wang, if there's any, before we pass it over to Mike Garcia.
Yes, Mr. Najari.
Chief, so what do you attribute the flattening, if we can call it, if we can be so bold as to call it a flattening of the curve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Najari, and I, you know, I'm going to be bold and go out on a limb and say that I believe that the actions of this council to be aggressive and to somewhat go against some of the early recommendations of face coverings for everybody, I think could be, could be a corollator to some of the flattening that we are seeing. It does take a while for the numbers to produce and to be shown and I believe that this council at your direction was one of the early adopters of making or of putting in an order that required face coverings for everybody when outside of the home. And I think that there could be a corollator to that and some flattening that we are seeing throughout our city.
Are you concerned of a second wave?
Yes.
To come back?
Yes.
When do you, when would the?
So I have set somewhat of an informal timer since the day that the opening of our businesses and some of our workforce was allowed to reconvene and that date is somewhere around June 10th. I think between June 10th and June 20th, I am worried about seeing what the numbers look like because a lot of people were allowed to be out 14 to 20 days prior to that and I'm closely monitoring that and I hope I'm wrong, but I am concerned to answer your question.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Chief, can you give us a status update or both Glendale-specific and regionally as to what the status is of the infection rates in the skilled nursing facilities and places where some of our more vulnerable members, people who are most vulnerable to this virus are housed?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kasakian. Unfortunately, initially, I was tracking every death in our city and I had reporting of about our first 50 deaths. And then the Department of Public Health started reporting deaths that were not reported through our three hospitals. And so I was no longer able to keep track of those deaths for all of them. I will tell you, out of our 83 deaths, about 46 of them are known to be from our skilled nursing facilities. So over half of our deaths that I know of are from our skilled nursing. There's about 20 that are reported from Department of Public Health that I don't know the source of, so I couldn't tell you the age, sex, or if they were from a home or a skilled nursing facility. As I've reported to this council before, we have been closely monitoring our skilled nursing facilities for, going on two months now. I have staff from our fire department EMS section who is in contact with several of our more concerning facilities daily and then others that we are in contact with each week. They are seeing better results from PPE. We and the three hospitals have offered them guidance on education, on signage. The member, the staff from Glendale Memorial, led by the president, CEO Jill Welton, and our staff from the fire department went to two facilities and provided testing to every patient and staff at two of our facilities. That continues to be an area that we are concerned about and that we continue to monitor closely. I'm not going to be bold enough to say that we're seeing any sort of flattening in those skilled nursing facilities yet. And it is still something that we closely are trying to work with the county to allow us to continue to provide testing to those facilities. We have just not been given that green light from the county yet.
Thank you. And as much as you can, we can continue pressing both the county and those facilities, letting them know that the city, your department, we as a council are here to help, to make sure that we're not allowing the disease to spread from places where there's concentration of infection. In addition to that, as we're moving through this, I understand that there was a group of web developers and developers who have created a website, InfoGears, to collect an aggregate of data that can help Glendale residents understand where in their area there are people who are symptomatic for COVID-19. Is there a way that we could possibly show the website or promote that? I know that the city has put it out on social media, but just so people who are watching this meeting can see it and understand it and utilize it to better inform themselves. And in addition to that, if the doctor is still on the line, I would like to ask, I know that one of the concerns is that when someone who's infected with COVID-19 is hospitalized and then they are released, are they released when they're completely free of the infection or are they released based on how long they stay at the hospital and when they are feeling fine enough to go home and be on the mend on their own?
Hi, thanks. This is Will. So two things. Patients are released when they're safe to go home. Their infectivity is continued to be presumptive until their symptoms are completely resolved and enough time has elapsed that has allowed their bodies and immune system to kick in. So patients go, we discharge patients, all hospitals discharge patients who could still be considered infectious and are given very specific instructions to continue the quarantine within their home.
Thank you. And then, yes, please.
Since I got you on the thing, I just wanted to congratulate Dr., I'm sorry, Fire Chief Lanzas. I completely agree with his assessment. I think the council should give themselves a pat on their back. I agree that there's a correlation with the use of the masks that you guys had decided to do and keep within the community to help prevent the continued spread of the infection. Along with his timeline is spot on. That's the same timeline we've given ourselves that we're expecting another either peak or wave to occur within the community.
So, thank you. And I second your congratulations, not to myself, but to my colleagues for working together on this issue. But one of the things I want to just express my thoughts on, because when we're releasing patients who still have COVID-19 and are at risk to spread it to others, can we, and is there a way to formalize a process by which to inform the families to which you're releasing the individuals to? And I know that you said that you are, but I've heard instances where because of limited English proficiency, perhaps because where the person is being released to doesn't have the adequate facilities for properly quarantining the person, that instructions are given, perhaps PPEs are distributed to the family members who have to continue to help care for the person? Because I think that without doing that, we're just basically asking for those individuals to then become carriers themselves as they try to nurse a sick relative or loved one or friend from home.
I'm sorry, before the doctor answers, did you say before they are free from coronavirus, they release them?
That is correct. You have to understand, you have a number of patients who never make it into the hospital and are COVID-positive and are being treated at their home already. And that is probably the majority of patients who contract this infection. The majority of patients are either asymptomatic and don't know it and are spreading it or are at home and dealing with the flu-like symptoms because they don't require an acute care hospital at that time. It's only the sicker patients that can't, they can no longer breathe, are having problems with that, that end up coming to our hospital. So we are discharging the same, those patients when they become stable enough to be at home, home. But you already have a very large number of patients who are already in the population with the instructions that if they're sick, they're presumed to either go get the COVID testing or they're presumed to be positive and are told to self-quarantine for 14 days.
And so this is one of those challenges, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, that when someone is discharged and then they're in the care of their family and they're trying to get over this, and obviously, it strikes people differently. Some people are stricken very heavily by this, other people are asymptomatic, other people just carry it off like it's a lighter version of the flu. But the issue is, you know, when someone does have someone who is symptomatic, then, you know, there's other challenges, you know, trying to go to work and care for a loved one, trying to find places in the home to isolate or quarantine. So these are all things that I hope, I'm sure our medical professionals have thought of all the procedures and protocols, but I hope that it is being translated and provided to all the individuals who come for help to the hospitals in Spanish, in Armenian, in Korean, in Tagalog, whatever languages are necessary. And I would also urge that at least some form of protective equipment be provided to families who may not have access to it to help ensure that we're controlling the spread of the virus.
Thank you.
And if there isn't such a program, I'd like to see our city help get involved in that because I think it's an important investment to make, whatever it may be, to help the hospitals out or at least find the people who would be willing to donate equipment to the hospitals to do so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kasakian, I would just like to emphasize what Dr. Wang said, that I don't necessarily think of the hospitals as where we need to get that education out. It's outside of the hospital because the large majority of the positivity tests that are coming are from asymptomatic or minor symptom patients that are going to a testing facility and then finding out that they're positive. And I'm hoping, I don't know this for sure, but I'm hoping that there is some communication that goes from the testing facility to those individuals that test positive that explain to them what they should be doing. And I don't know that that's being done in all the languages that it should be.
Well, let's make sure.
We'll definitely follow up on that. For your first point, reference the website, it should be getting emailed to Aram as we speak, but it's info-gears.org is the website. And if people go on there, it's a short survey that you take and it helps to aggregate data throughout any community, specifically, this was done for us, that will help to show people within your area by zip code of how many positivity cases, how many positive cases there are within a zip code. So info-gears.org is the website.
And it doesn't give anyone else in the area personal information or specific address?
Correct.
It gives you a shading, a color code by which you can assess how many people in a certain area are feeling those symptoms.
Correct. And maybe Mr. Adjemaney?
Adjemaney.
Adjemaney can put it up after Mr. Garcia's comments.
Mr. Garcia.
Questions on?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please. Ms. Divine.
This is just, yes, this is just a comment to Dr. Wang. I want to thank him because he was at our meeting when we were speaking about mandating of face covering. And when he said that he felt that that was what we should do, it just reinforced my resolve to continue my support for the mandate. So I want to thank him.
Now, you were on the edge there, Paula. You were like, mm.
No, I was never on the edge or I wanted it to. I've always wanted that mandate, not on the edge. Thanks, doctor.
Thank you. Okay. So.
We're on the edge.
Can we get the power pump back up, Aram?
Sure.
There's the website, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We can always.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the other items that were on your agenda related to two of the orders that had been continued to tomorrow, to expire tomorrow, one having to do with the face coverings and the other one having to do with the commercial eviction moratorium.
One second, Mr. Garcia. The city manager, also Yasmin Beers. So what happens? We're continuously going, this meeting going to go on?
Yes.
Because we had three, something else on the agenda.
So this meeting will go until we end the meeting and then we will commence the 3:00 PM meeting. As soon as you're done with this, you can take a quick break and then we can have the 3:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with respect to the orders, the two orders that are before you for further consideration on extending and potential amendments are the face coverings order as well as the commercial eviction moratorium. And in addition, an additional item related to this emergency is the community development department will be requesting council direction that would allow the city manager to waive fees for a 90-day period for the alfresco program so we can get that up and running as quickly as possible. And then if there are any questions on that part of it, I'm sure Mr. Lansman can speak to that, but I'll address it in the primary comments. So with respect to the face coverings, the council ordered, extended that order, but extended it to June 3rd. At that May 12th meeting, when it was previously extended, subsequent to that, both the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles and a number of other jurisdictions have also brought in their face covering orders to expand to many more activities than just, for example, at essential businesses, workers and visitors of essential businesses. However, as we move into the period where the county is moving to relax some of its safer-at-home orders and so-called safer-at-home and work orders, we thought it was appropriate to revise or, and I wouldn't even use the word revise, there were revisions, but what we're doing is providing a little bit more specificity to the face covering orders to cover some of the situations that we're going to be dealing with, not only within our own organization, but businesses throughout the city are going to be dealing with. So in addition to council being required to extend the date of the face covering orders if you're so inclined, there's a couple of other provisions dealing with both indoor and outdoor activity. And I'll just go through them a little bit. I have a couple of points, but I'll actually read some of the points from the revised order, just so we have some clarity on what the revised order would contain. So as it relates to shared space indoors and indoors. So as it relates to shared space and indoors, indoor space, under the revised order, a person would not need to wear a face covering when alone or only with others in their household or living unit, in any building or enclosed space, such as one at work, if there's nobody else within six feet, and others, whether coworkers, customers, building staff, or members of the public, are not likely to be in the same space for more than a few dates, few minutes in the following few days. By way of example, a face covering must be worn if a person shares a desk or individual office with coworkers on an alternating schedule, or in a space where equipment such as tools, supplies, copiers, or computers are shared. Further, a face covering would need not be worn when a person is alone in a private office or area that is not shared and not likely to be visited by others without prior warning. But if another person enters the immediate area and is likely to remain nearby, both people must put on a face covering for the duration of their interaction. With respect to certain, there are certain instances where workplace safety may all go towards not wearing a face covering. So for example, a face covering would not be required if an individual can show that while working, it would create a risk to the person related to their work as determined by local, state, or federal regulations or workplace safety guidelines. In addition, with a little bit more specificity, a person would not be required to wear a face covering because the work requires substantial physical exertion, such as standing and walking for a significant portion of the workday, and the workspace is limited to six feet of the working area for coworkers, as well as members of the public, and other appropriate physical distancing between coworkers exists. And so this would obviously be geared towards folks that are out in the field, whether it's our own folks, or, you know, just businesses in general exerting, where they're engaged in physical activity and use of that face covering as putting their ability to breathe at risk. And additionally, with respect to outdoor usage of the face covering, it'd still be required, but there'd be more specificity to provide that when they're alone or only with members of their household or living unit, they would not be required to wear it, but they would be required to have it visible and immediately ready to cover their nose and mouth when, so that they can put it on quickly when they see folks within 30 feet, so that at the point that the individual is within six feet of another individual, they will have had the opportunity to put the face covering on. So those are some of the changes that we put, and we've looked at some of the other orders that especially the county and city of LA have put a little bit more specificity, and we believe it's a good, it's a good mix to put those into our face coverings as well. So there's a little bit more clarity when folks are outside or engaged in their work activity, certainly as we're starting to see more folks returning to work. With respect to the commercial eviction moratorium, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the council extended this one as well till June 3rd. And then, the current order obviously prohibits the eviction of commercial tenants during this, for the length of this order. And so, if the council wants to extend that prohibition, it would need to do so. The other orders, if you recall, have been extended to June 30th, so it would seem to make sense to extend this one to June 30th as well, if the council's so inclined. The current order also exempts publicly traded companies. A number of the jurisdictions that we discussed in the staff report also exclude multinational corporations or companies, and then excludes companies based on a number of employees. And you see there's a range within, as identified by some other jurisdictions, city and the county of LA, Santa Monica, Culver City, anywhere between 100 and 500 employees. Burbank, as was discussed the last time we discussed this, has their threshold based on the eligibility for the SBA's PPP program. And as we reported in the staff report, council may wish to base it on the employee count. It's a little bit easier for purposes of interpretation and enforcement. And we note, for example, the SBA's PPP program, eligibility for that program may vary depending on the particular industry that the business is in. So with that, we would seek council direction to, if council's inclined, to put an exception for companies that are a certain size. We did include within the staff report the firms within the city, the data that we have that shows how many employees that they have. And again, that's, that data that's in there are Glendale employees working at those locations, so there are obviously a number of businesses in Glendale that have employees that are outside the city. It's not, it's not, we're not able to obtain that information, how many employees all Glendale employers have, or all employers with offices in Glendale have. But that's the best available data that's in there. And then we would note, obviously, and you've received a number of communications from business property owners requesting that the application, the application of exemption be to those companies that had 100 employees, and they say the term that was used was pre-COVID. I'm not really sure what that means. I'm sure some of the speakers will address, but I assume it means at prior to the time that the stay-at-home orders were put into place, they had 100 employees. Again, that seems a little bit difficult to enforce, or maybe more difficult to interpret. And then also point out that obviously, businesses that are struggling and had to shed employees and are struggling to pay their rent, or may still be subject to, or may be exempt from this, given the fact that they had 100 employees at the time the stay-at-home orders went into place. So something else for the council's consideration. And then, finally, with respect to the, as I mentioned, the alfresco program pursuant to the council direction to get that moving forward as quickly as possible, the staff is recommending a 90-day waiver of the fees that would be necessary for that, that would normally be charged for use of a temporary certificate of occupancy permit, that's generally charged at $166 per hour. And then, there's also a sidewalk dining permit, which is a $233 fee, plus a yearly licensing fee of $2.23 per square foot. It's recommended that, and the city manager has the authority, as the director of emergency services, to execute an emergency public order, but we wanted to bring that to you to see if there's any concern with doing that, otherwise, the city manager will move forward and do that. So with that, happy answering questions. I do know, Mr. Mayor, you probably have a number of speakers wanting to speak on the commercial eviction moratorium.
So we go first to the speakers. Okay, Mr. Bratman.
Can I make a recommendation? I think if maybe we can knock off the mask issue and the alfresco, maybe take care of those, and then, because, well, I guess we don't know who the callers, what the callers want to speak on, do we? I'm guessing most of them are about the commercial eviction moratorium, but, or we could take that one first and, yeah, maybe we could do it the other way around.
And then we can discuss the issue.
Mayor, we have line 5, 2, 3, and 4 for you.
Okay. You are on the air with city council members. We are listening.
Hello?
Yes. Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman, calling tonight from beautiful, far north Glendale, where Sharon and I have been safer at home for the last 81 days since March 13th. As senior citizens with underlying medical conditions, we are both on the highest risk group, and therefore must do whatever we feel we have to do to maintain our health and safety. There are some places I feel safe going out to in public, and some places I don't. I feel safe going to the post office because there is mandatory mask wearing is enforced. Everyone has gloves on, everyone is socially distant. There's also no problem picking up prescriptions at the Kaiser Pharmacy on Glen Oaks, because they have staff wearing masks stationed outside, who are making sure that people are following the rules. Where I don't feel safe going is places like automatic teller machines or gas stations, because at least in my neighborhood, there is an extremely low rate of compliance with mandatory masking. And therefore, I'm calling you today in support of extending the mandatory face covering ordinance. As you know, I've been sending emails to all of you advocating for this and providing newspaper articles and other evidence I found that indicates that wearing masks is a very highly effective way of stopping the spread of infection. And Councilmember Bratman asked me what it was that I was asking the city to do, and I replied that I wanted the city to diligently implement public health best practices. And I was wondering what the situation was with him, because he has twice voted against this. And one of the, I understand that, you know, we have different experiences and different, you know, we come from different places, and I certainly don't dispute that Councilmember Bratman has legitimate reasons for thinking, you know, why he does. But he did say something that I found kind of disturbing. He said, "In fact, I am the only one actually paying attention to the science and advice of public health." And I have to say, I found that statement disappointing, because first of all, I don't believe that it's true. And second of all, I think in order for the citizens of Glendale to get the best possible decisions out of their elected officials, it's necessary for people to work together and to not impugn the background of others in terms of what they have advocated for. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your call. You are on the air with city council, the mayor, and the staff. You are on the air?
Hello?
Yes?
Yes, hi. This is Joe Stiddick, Investment Property Services, and DGA board member.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to confine my quick comments to just the commercial component of the ordinance. And I would request the following for your consideration, not to extend the moratorium beyond June 30th, as businesses need to move forward and continue to be, not be, continue to be stalemated by unnecessary constraints. That's number one. Item number two is the limitation on 100 employee pre-C-19, members be, companies be exempted from the moratorium, which seems to make sense. The third point is retain a 90-day payment commencement period for deferred rents and longer periods that will be allowed for mutual agreement by arrangement between the property owners and tenants on a one-to-one basis, rather than being constrained by a regulation. And lastly, just a broad statement, we've all experienced this public disorder the last couple of weeks, and I want to compliment the city council members with their courage to take steps to minimize out-of-area organizations from holding public demonstrations in our community. The past week has shown that what starts off to be a public support for changes in a very egregious act that occurred by a few civil servants has morphed into a justification to pursue criminal acts and looting, vandalism, and theft of property destruction. I urge the council to do everything within your abilities to ensure Glendale remains a safe city for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with council members. Yes, please. And the staff. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, management and staff. This is Tony Maniscalchi. I was alerted only a couple of hours ago of this time change, and while I don't have five minutes to fill my communication, I want to thank you, all of you, for staying and supporting our property owners, our citizens, for being available, and for your regular communication and notices of events that are protecting the city. You're all sitting in some very hot seats right now, and we appreciate it. But it's critical we voice a growing concern for any extensions of our moratorium or eviction protections. For three months, property owners have provided relief to commercial and residential tenants, either voluntarily or by forced insubordination of tenants. We're beginning to see technical defaults by some owners that will result in foreclosure notices or bankruptcy protection if recovery is not imminent. Please do not consider further extensions to or for any rent deferrals or any actions that prevent owners in the recovery of possession to their properties. And please allow the owners to negotiate directly with their tenants that are in default for an equitable repayment plan. Not all tenants are equal. While your early actions and the actions of the state were genuine, continuing down this path only contributes to the growing misunderstandings by tenants that paying rent is optional. Today, we all deplore the violent acts of citizens to the financial looting of stores and businesses, but providing a path for citizens not to pay rent or a safety net from eviction is also financial destruction and theft, simply packaged a little differently. Please do not extend the moratorium past the June 3rd date. I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you very much.
Good day.
Bye-bye. Yes, you are on the air with city council members and mayor and staff.
Hello, Mayor Adgenian. My name is Rick Lemo, and I am representing the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. I first want to congratulate our city manager, Chief Lanzas, Chief Bobolitis, and especially the staff, as well as Councilmember Aaron Ajarian. He has joined with city staff and done a very good job of monitoring social media and making us all aware of the threats that are posed to our city. And because of the quick action of city managers and our police and fire, Glendale has remained safe, and we've remained prepared, and we are grateful for that. The main reason I am calling again today, though, is the Greater Downtown Glendale Association will hopefully stay as an association, but we're on the precipice of many of our property owners considering bankruptcy claims. You know, there's a time when council takes action for the common good, and we're all grateful for that. There is also a time when council uses its judgment and decides to stay out of the way and no longer get involved in business activities, or in what maybe appeared by some as bordering on a public taking of property. We are asking that you use your judgment now and take no further action. Put yourself in this position. Businesses have been closed down because of the COVID-19. That's not your fault. That's part of what's happened to us all. Now, let's move on. The city council and the county of Los Angeles have determined over time benchmarks that allow us to open. And we were all allowed to begin this opening process, oddly enough, today. In fact, you will hear later on at the 6 o'clock meeting about some spectacular plans that the Downtown Glendale Association had to aid our tenants in that opening. But now, imagine this, civil unrest and potential rioting and looting has now caused us all to scrap our opening plans, and now we're unable to open again. And we are also unable to even prepare because we're under a curfew after 6 o'clock at night. Business cannot take any more encumbrances imposed by government. So we're asking you to please cease any further extension of the commercial rent deferral. And please identify businesses that were pre-COVID, employees 100 or more, multinational or publicly traded, that they don't get the break. We are seeing that movie theaters in town and others have said, hey, we don't have to pay rent, Glendale City Council says we can defer it. And force any deferral to be adjudicated between the landlord and the tenant to allow for fair negotiation. Please, don't let down the businesses who support our government. They support with activities, they support to charities, and quite frankly, they support through their property taxes. So with that, I am asking you, on behalf, to please remember that if you continue these moratoriums, save yourself some time. There's no need to discuss the alfresco program anymore, because the fact of the matter is, we're not going to have the businesses who can't afford it. And by the way, one other piece of information, I did some homework for you. No other city is charging to let people have some of these expanded applications. No other city is charging to let people have some of these expanded applications. Also want to let you know that if you go with the 100-plus pre-COVID employees, it's completely consistent with LA County, as some of your activities have been. Please don't let business down this time. And thank you all very much for your dedication and your service.
Thank you. Hello, you are on the air with City Council members and the staff.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tana Hudson, and I own a small gym in Glendale. It's called Pure Able Training Fitness. I did send some emails to you earlier, or last week, and I really appreciate those that responded. I guess I'm the one calling from being the tenant, asking for an extension on the moratorium because way it stands right now, that as soon as the moratorium is lifted, you've only given us small business owners three months to repay rent that's been deferred. By myself, I'm still not allowed to open because I am a fitness training studio, and I'm really struggling. I'm at the point where I have to make a decision, can I continue down this pathway without enough revenue to support my staff? Because I still personally have not received any money from the triple P. The application process has been very difficult. So I guess I'm the opposite end of what other people that are calling in and asking for, for small businesses like myself, to have more support, that we can pay everything back, which I have no problem doing. But three months is such a short amount of time to have to repay the rent effective immediately, when as a gym, your revenue doesn't start as soon as the day that you're open. We have memberships that come on a monthly basis, and not everything comes all at one time. So I guess I'm the opposite, asking for a little bit more time because all businesses are not the same. And I personally am having extreme difficulty with my landlord, to the point where he has called the city army two times to falsely report me. He even called the police to falsely report me, and it's empowered an attorney to come after me because he is so upset that I had to defer my rent because my business was forced to close. So not everybody is in the same situation. So I'm just asking for some support as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, you are on the air with mayor and City Council members and the staff.
Hello, hi. Good evening, good, I mean, good afternoon. I just want to say I'm really outraged that Tony Maniscalchi had the audacity to compare those who are unable to pay their rent on their properties because their businesses were closed as a result of the COVID-19 moratoriums, comparing them to the looters. That's a really audacious statement that he made. It shows you how much he's, he's in black touch with reality. He has no care for the citizens who are suffering during this time, those business owners who are barely unable to pay their rent. He fails, him and Rick Lemo failed to mention that businesses and landlords get mortgage extensions not to pay rent for at least three months, and some are six months or 12 months, depending on the banks. And also some, some of these landlords have received COVID-19 assistance, where there is a legislature in the California, bill in the California Legislature, asking for more information, because these landlords, when they receive that assistance, they should have, they want them to not evict tenants and stuff, add protection. But these landlords, they want to double tip, they want to get this assistance and not mention it to you or the public, or they think we are fools, we don't know about that. And they are acting at this time, they don't care about the businesses who are suffering, who are going to go bankrupt. Businesses need more time to pay their rent. Other cities have extended those protections, and the city of Glendale should do the same, unless you want to end up with a lot of bankrupt businesses around and empty business shops. They don't, these landlords, especially Rick Lemo, representing the billionaire Caruso, who has built all this property on free Glendale land, land given by the city of Glendale, given to him free, and he is complaining. And he has also to come every time and tell you that we are cleaning in front of our business. I mean, that's really shameful. That's, that's what he has to come and tell you every time. That's a big service that he's doing, that he's cleaning on the land that was given to him free. I mean, I mean, that's really ridiculous that he has to keep on mentioning every time in the previous meetings. And so the landlords have been acting like worse than lawn sharks, I must say. And they don't care about the tenants or the business owners. And you need to extend those moratoriums and protect those vulnerable business owners who will go bankrupt if they don't have this protection. I mean, they cannot earn income, and they don't have enough money to pay in back in those periods. Those landlords are getting those extensions, and especially the apartment building owners who are, have overcharged their tenants, and people doubled their, the apartment rents, and they have made big savings account as a, as a result of that. And they come in right now, instead of caring for the tenants, they are just crying more and more. It's just that it's really, it shows how uncaring they are. Some even said that, let us start evicting so we can bring new people. They don't care about the city. The reason that city of Glendale is safe is because of the residents, the family-oriented residents that have been living here for a very long time. That's why there is safety in Glendale. And these people don't care if the new people come and as long as they pass it and they fill their pockets. And you should not be siding with that. And I know each one, especially some of the City Council members, they keep on saying, oh, we want to be fair for the landlords. We have been fair for the landlords more than enough. They have, they filled their pockets, you know?
Thank you very much.
And it's very obvious when you are siding with them, don't say you need to be fair for the landlords. You know, it's not fair for the tenants, that's what it is.
Thank you very much.
And especially when Paula Devine last time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your call.
That you have to.
I appreciate it. Okay. You are on the, you are on the line. You are on the air with City Council and City.
Yes, Mayor Agudinian. This is Rick Lemo calling back, and I just thought it would be fair, it's important for you folks to hear the truth.
Mr. Mayor.
And to understand.
Hold on, Mr. Lemo. We don't answer to the previous caller.
I'm not in any way, shape or form representing anyone other than the Downtown Glendale Association.
Thank you very much. Thank you for explaining. Thank you. Okay, so what, we have any comments from council members? So then we can discuss the items.
Mr. Brotman will come back, but yeah, so on the face coverings, it's before you, there's no, you know, you can adopt it as presented, as revised. And then the commercial eviction moratorium, obviously, need to, if you want to have a provision that exempts, you know, companies of a certain size based on employees, you would need to make that part of your motion.
Is the best, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Is it better to do, let's say, face covering?
Correct, separately.
Go to the commercial tenancies, alfresco.
Right. And alfresco, we really just need some direction that, or just we want to hear that you're okay with, with Ms. Beers executing an emergency public order to waive the fees.
I'll move the, the new face covering regulations, which mean you can, you can keep them handy, but put them on when you come within, what was it?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet. And with all the other office.
You mean outside?
Outside, outside.
Yes.
With all the other interior office building restrictions that were, that were put forth and mentioned until June 30th.
I mean, it's up to you, but that's, we will.
I think we should just go a month at a time.
Keep them to June 30th and then.
Is there a sec? I'll second that. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Councilmember Devine?
Is there? Councilmember Devine?
I guess she's not online.
Her mic is off.
Thumb up or thumb down, Paula?
I think her mic's off. Can someone mute her, unmute her? She's muted.
Councilmember Devine?
Second that, I had a comment on that. I like the, the, this motion, this resolution, because it's common sense that we're putting into this face covering, so I vote yes.
Yes, okay. Next.
Sanquin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agudinian?
Yes.
Okay, what's next?
The next would be the commercial eviction moratorium.
And I would, Mayor, I would approve that 90-day waiver for fees for the alfresco dining. I think we should get that started right away.
That's fine, if we want, and we don't need a motion, but we just want to make sure that the council is okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'd like to, I'd like to just discuss that a little bit, if we could.
Please, good.
So I'm definitely for not charging any fees. I want this to go ahead. I just want to check, how are we handling, you know, creating space? So to what extent are we, are there situations where we're going to be closing roads or, or repurposing parking? Because what I don't want to do is take away pedestrian space any more than we otherwise would. You know, I know normally we will allow a restaurant from time to time to use up a certain amount of space. So I just want to make sure that, we've been trying to expand pedestrian space because there are more people out, we want people to physically distance. I don't want to take away that space for tables. What I would like to see happen is if we are going to put tables on sidewalks, we find a way to move, you know, create a separate pedestrian space through, you know, taking out parking or something like that. And this is all temporary, remember? So it's not as if we're, you know, changing the world here, but, but I feel strongly about that.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, we are creating parklets with the use of K-rail out in the parking spaces to put tables and chairs. In some cases, the sidewalk may be wide enough where you could utilize that for additional tables. We will always maintain a width of at least four feet unimpeded for pedestrians to cross by. The other two areas that we're looking at are alleys and, and private parking lots, where people can use that space, will allow them to use that space for tables and chairs as opposed to requiring it for parking. So we are trying to create a program that does all of those things, expands capacity, continues to provide for pedestrian activity in a safe manner for people to dine out.
Excuse me, safe manner, can you elaborate on that? Because that's what I'm.
By safe manner, two things. Proper social distancing, so the tables and chairs are a distance away, that there's one household that is eating at a time at a table. But then also the use of K-rail to protect people that will be eating outside from traffic that is, is using the adjacent street.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Brot.
I liked everything you said. I mean, I love the idea of using parklets. I'm concerned about a four-foot sidewalk space when we're telling people they need to be six feet apart. I don't think that works. So I'd ask if you could look more carefully at that. I think we need, we need the full sidewalk. Because really, people need more space now than they used to. We need to think about, we need to think about our public space a little bit differently for a while.
Can we have you come back with, with these designs so we can find?
Yes.
There's, I think there's a desire to fine tune and, you know, get the distances. Can we approve this, but come back?
Yeah, I don't want to slow things down. I mean, I want us to go ahead, so I'd rather just put it in your hands to do it.
I think we need to see how this will be arranged. Saying is different than we see on a paper.
I have to say, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in terms of the alfresco dining and our ability to be able to erect some of these sites in conjunction with the restaurants that are in place, for them to be able to open their doors once they can, and have a business model that is going to somewhat work for them in the interim, our ability to come back and get approvals on all the parklets and all of the private parking spaces in terms of their use, et cetera, I think will take much longer than their need to be able to get these spaces in order for their businesses to be functional. So I think the overall direction that council provided us, which was go do it because it is temporary. I mean, the, the big part about this is that it is temporary, and do it in a safe manner to make sure that the safety is of utmost priority. And that safety is a number of things, not just pedestrian and vehicular safety, but it's also the COVID piece in terms of the pandemic. And so to allow staff to go do that work, because if we're going to come back to council and provide a report, let's say, in, in a week or two, then we're going to have that discussion, and we're going to lose that timeframe for these businesses to have the allowance to be able to open their doors, bigger than just the footprint that they have within their facility. So that would be our, our request of you, is to allow us to go work with the businesses, knowing that we're going to have a number of these criteria in place for consideration before moving forward.
I'm satisfied with your explanation. I will, yeah, you're set.
Just one, just, just one more thing. So I agree. I, I'm just kind of expressing my wishes on how this is rolled out, but I totally trust you guys on staff to do it, get it going fast. And, you know, if there are issues with some sidewalk space, we can work over time to try to, to try to work on some better solutions. So I don't want to hold anything up.
All right. Okay, what's next?
I think Paul.
Mr. Devine, may I?
Any further comments on the alfresco piece of it?
So if you can have it there, so this way we can see the items.
Sure. The, you put that last slide back.
Easier to decide faster. What's next item?
So that, the commercial eviction moratorium, one, obviously putting a date on that, it would be June 30th, I guess, to be in line with the others. And then what exemptions, what, you know, size commercial tenants would be exempt. Right now, the order exempts publicly traded companies, and then we're looking for direction on.
Multinational corporations.
Well, as we put in the report, again, multinational corporation, that literally could be a company that has an office here in Glendale and an office somewhere else. And as we know, that might sweep up some small or medium-sized businesses, so that's up to you. Some of the other cities do have that, but I don't see it as, as, as easy to enforce or interpret as, as maybe some of the other jurisdictions are, given, given some of our businesses here in Glendale. I think the bigger discussion point from the last time was what size companies would be exempt from being able to utilize the commercial eviction moratorium as a commercial tenant. Some cities have 100 employees or more, would be exempt, would not be exempt, no, would be, would be exempt, so they wouldn't be subject to the moratorium. Some, Corvus City was at 200, some others were at 500. We just need council to.
But multinational corporation can be part of that exemption, exception.
Sure, it can be.
Re- exemption of that 100 and 200, so it can be part of that.
It can be.
Yeah.
Again, but.
There are lots of multinational corporation, they have only one or two employees in here.
So I, what my point was, you really just need to identify the size of company that you want to be exempt from the moratorium.
I have a proposal, if, if you want to, I have a proposal. Well, I mean, first of all, you know, I, I know all the people calling in, everybody is feeling pain. I just kind of, it's such a difficult position we're in because, you know, the property owners are feeling pain, the small businesses are feeling pain, and we're in this horrible position where we're having to divide up the pain, right?
That's right.
So, you know, if we had a scalpel and we could kind of go after each case and just identify who really needs it, that'd be great, but that's not, not how it works. So I feel, so last time, last time we discussed this, I feel we went a little bit too far in going from 12 months to three months. I would actually propose we go and do it at six months. As far as who is included and who isn't, I think we should do it, you know, we have publicly traded companies. I had originally proposed something tied to the SBA PPP program, but our city attorney explained that that's not a very easy way to draw the line, there's, there's a lot of complexity to that. And I'm glad we held off Councilmember Najarian because it is more, it was more complicated than I thought. So I would say we go with 200 employees, publicly traded, and something like 11 or more locations, which I think is something that's kind of commonly used. And Mr. Garcia, you mentioned other instances where that formula of 11 or more locations is used, and I think that's what I would propose. So I would propose a 180-day safe harbor, 200 employees, publicly traded, 11 or more locations.
But 200 employees, that's a giant company. But 200 employees, that's a giant company. I mean, how many companies we have in Glendale, over 200 employees?
Well, I'm, I'm flexible. I mean, I could do 100 too. I just think, you know, it's something in that range, and 11 or more, I think makes sense to me, but, you know, it's not, it's not a motion yet, it's just a discussion.
So, I would support the, I think we need to be a little bit tighter. I would go with a, I would suggest we consider the 100 and above not to be exempt from the rent moratorium. Three to six month, I'm, I mean, when I say three, part of me envisions small owners getting kicked out.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's the reality. I think landlords are working with, with tenants, and that's my, I'm open to discussion on that. I would lean towards three months, but I'm, I'm, I will discuss that. I won't kill the, you know, I won't vote against this, this issue for that item only.
I, I have a problem with three months, because they already are three months late. So, we don't know what will happen. As soon as they open, the business is going to not go to.
Essentially.
Yeah, then they have to pay double the amount. That's going to be very difficult. I don't know, I, I understand landlords are in very dire situation too. I have no question about it, because they have to make their payments, but however three months, I think is a very short period of time, maybe we go.
I'd like to weigh in, Mayor.
Yes, please, Ms. Devine.
Ms. Devine, thank you. I, I'd like to see how state consistent with LA counting on the number, so it would be 100 employees or more pre-COVID, to stick with, to do with that sort of resolution. I don't see any reason for an extension. We're starting to open. I think it would be fair for landlords, let's let the landlords negotiate, give them time to, 60-day period to negotiate with their tenants, to figure what, what they would be, how they could work out the repayments. I think that's fair. That, that's my opinion.
Did you say 60 days, Ms. Devine?
I said no extension, but 60 days to let them negotiate the payment, to how they will pay, repay their, their rents.
60-day negotiate, but how long the person has time to pay?
That was, that was, I think it was a suggestion from Mr. Sidik, that they have 60-day period to negotiate the repayment. But there, there would be no extension on the, on the moratorium for them, no extension.
And I became.
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Let me, I'm not understanding either. So, you're, where you're at right now, Ms., Councilmember Devine, is not extending the moratorium, and then, rather than a 90-day repayment period, which is currently what the, what the order says, you would, 60-day for the, the parties to negotiate repayment terms.
Well, they could, they could have the 90 days, but they would have this negotiation period where they can figure out how they're going to be paying. And that's not something that I would, you know, I'm not going to die on that hill.
I mean, what I'm understanding, 60 days to negotiate, but afterward to have three months, that would be like five months.
No, 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 I'm not adding any time onto the, just forget about the 60-day negotiations. Well, I'll just go with the three months, no extension on the moratorium at all. And 100 employees, co, pre-COVID employees.
Mr. Brot. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brot.
Let me just, before you address it, just, if we don't extend it, there's no need to create another exemption for it. So, I just want to make sure we're clear about that, if, if the council.
No extension, no extension.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. I'm fine with Councilmember Brotman's suggestions, and if there's a desire to lower that figure to 100 employees, I will second his motion with the six months caveat.
Thank you.
Condition.
With an extension, we're talking about with an extension until June 30th of the emergency period?
Yes. To June 30th?
You like six months, Mr. Brotman likes six months, Ms. Devine likes three months.
And I think three months would be impossible.
I would prefer three, but I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know.
Okay, well, let me make a motion if I could.
Yes.
Can I make, so my motion would be, we provide a 180-day safe harbor after the end of the, after the.
End of the moratorium, 180 days to repay.
So, we extend the moratorium to the end of June. We give, you know, tenants have up to 180 days to make good on their back rents. Of course, we, we should encourage them to negotiate in good faith with landlords and try to work out something else, and that's perfectly fine, but, and I'm happy cutting it off at 100. You're saying this is 100 Glendale, right?
But council would have to provide direction. Most of the jurisdictions that have the employee, because it's 100 company-wide, even if they have, you know, fewer in their particular jurisdiction. So, that's the council direction, and council will have to make that motion. It's a company that has 100 employees in Glendale, that, that council can provide their direction.
But you said that's easier to, kind of easier to identify employees in Glendale because we have that information, right?
It was easier for us to provide you that information. I'm not sure it's easier to enforce one way or the other.
Okay, well, my motion would be 100 in Glendale.
That should be in my, I'm sorry to stop you. That should be definitely 100 in Glendale. We can't go around and see where they have branches and find out how many people are working, that will be impossible.
Okay, so let me just finish my motion then, and 11 or more locations.
If I, can I address that part of it? If I, before there's further discussion on that, just so you know, I mean, there's a discussion on, on the, the next agenda item regarding formula businesses, which is probably where that 11 comes from. It talks about, it's usually in reference to restaurants, chain restaurants, and it's a type of restaurant that has 11 or more locations in operation located anywhere in the world. So, that's, that's certainly fine, but if you, I think if you have 100 employees in Glendale, and up to, and at least 11 anywhere in the world, that's, that's pretty much a very large company. I just want to make sure you're not questioning it, I just want to make sure that's usually going to be a very large company.
I mean, how many outlets does Big Shack Chicken have?
I don't, I don't know.
Probably, I don't think they have 11. I would, and I have the, I have the idea that that's a pretty well-capitalized company.
I can't speak to that, but.
Shake Shack, they said they have 280.
No, no, Big Shack.
Shake Shack.
I just want to avoid.
Shake Shack.
Sorry.
Oh, Big Shack.
I want to avoid these, you know, larger kind of franchise-type, like, I don't know, like, what was an example? We were, we were talking about Cheesecake Factory, right? Like, I don't want to include a Cheesecake Factory in this. That's.
They may be publicly traded.
Well, that, that's even more reason to keep the number at three, isn't it? Let's do three, and make sure it's pre-COVID, because a company could come in and say, well, now I only have 80, 80 employees, whereas before COVID, I had 150. So, I think we have to include the pre-COVID specification.
I'm fine with the pre-COVID specification, but Councilmember Devine, what was the thing with the three? The three referring to locations?
Three, three locations. 11 locations would make them a pretty big company. So, I would say limit that to three or four locations, and, and there is them.
Well, but the purpose is, we want to, we want the bigger companies that are able to pay to pay.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to give reprieve to the smaller, homegrown companies. So, the only reason I think 11 is fine is because it's based on some sort of official figure?
I wouldn't say official, it was, it was a requirement in another, in another city that looked at particular, particular type of exemption for the, for the delivery fee.
I could split the difference on that. I mean, we could say, okay, so let me, let me put my motion up. 180-day safe harbor, what are we saying, 100 employees pre-COVID in Glendale, publicly traded, five or more locations. That's my motion.
Okay.
Is there any second to it?
I'll second.
You're seconding?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brot.
Hold on, I just want to make, before, I got all of that, so when you say five or more locations, that if they have five or more locations, they would, they would be, they would be exempt from the moratorium, they would not be eligible. So, in, in a company that has 100 or more pre-COVID employees but only had three locations, they're, they're not going to be exempted, and they would be able to utilize the commercial eviction moratorium. Is that your intent? Or is it an or?
It's an or.
Okay, so the, the five or more locations is, is an or, but everything else is an and, six months?
Five and more in Glendale?
No, no, no.
In the country?
Five, yeah, five, anywhere in the world.
I, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of a, somebody that, you know, a restaurant, they have five, they have six locations, or five locations, but they may only have 10 employees in Glendale. So, I don't want them covered.
Because they have multiple locations.
Because they have so many locations. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Okay, I, I understand, I just wanted to make clarification.
Ms. Devine.
And I have a question here. Are, are you recommending an extension then? On the moratorium?
Yeah, till June 30th.
That's part of your motion.
Till June 30th, yeah.
To June 30th.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, so I was not for an extension, but 30 days, it's 30 days?
To June 30th.
Till the end of June?
To June 30th.
Okay, okay, all right.
I apologize, I interrupted.
All right, now, Mr. Garcia, what we are voting on?
So, you're, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the motion is to extend the commercial eviction moratorium to June 30th. It would include an exemption for, it would, it would amend the repayment period to 180 days. It would exempt publicly traded companies, companies with 100 or more employees pro, pre-COVID, and companies with five or more locations anywhere in the world.
Okay.
Hundred, hundred more in Glendale.
So.
Ms. Devine.
I'm, I'm terribly sorry, I keep asking this, but, so how many more months are they going to have before they pay rent?
They, the moratorium itself will expire as written, as proposed, the moratorium will expire on June 30th. So, if council doesn't extend it on July 1st, they'll owe rent for July, and then they'll have 180 days to, to pay any of the backpaying rent, payback, any of the backdo.
Okay, so they have to start paying after the, after June 30th, they must start paying?
And they'll have six months to pay back whatever back rent they owe.
Yeah.
So, whatever back rent they have will be spread out, or whatever agreement they come up with.
Unless you're in that group of businesses, size-wise, employee-wise, and then all the back rent is due July 1st.
Yes, correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
They are not exempt, they have to pay. Okay, do we have a motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Well, let me actually, can I, can I briefly, to Councilmember Najarian's question, if they're not, if they are not, if they're exempt, then this gets extended, they'll have to start paying back rent. If they're no longer subject to the order, they'll have to start paying back rent, they'll have to start paying rent on June 3rd, or June 4th, because that's when the previous one expired. So, if they become, if they become ineligible for it by virtue of the exemptions that you're proposing, they'll have to start paying rent on, on June 4th, and they will, and they'll have, but they'll have 180 days to pay it back. Does that make sense? Because you are not, for certain companies, you, you expanded the list of exemptions, those folks that are not, that are now, will not be, will be exempt from it, meaning they will not be subject to it, they will not be able to take advantage of it, they'll have to start paying rent. Their, their moratorium ends on June 4th.
But that's too close.
That blanket, so the June 3rd does not apply to those large companies?
Yeah, but you could, if you wanted, just extend everybody that was subject to the prior order until June.
That's too close, even if they are, by the time you give notice.
We can do it that way.
So, potentially, a business, although, albeit large, would have to pay June rent, May rent, April rent.
And March, probably.
March rent, if they hadn't paid it all on June 4th, if we adopt this today.
No, because they, they were subject to the prior, they were subject to the prior order, which was they had three months to pay it back.
Oh, I see, oh, so we're over.
Yeah.
So, previous order will apply to them?
That's the way I would read it, yes.
So, when would that be due?
That would be, yeah, unless the council changes, the council could decide to change it for those to, you know, basically give everybody six months, but give, give the people who are, are, were subject to the prior order, tell them they have to pay rents starting on June 4th.
Let's make it easy to understand, if we do any, if we do anything here, let's make it understandable, because I'm, I'm, I wasn't aware that there was a carryover ordinance that was applied.
Not that it carries over, but you're changing, for, for those folks that are no longer eligible for it because you expanded the list of exemptions, they certainly have to start paying rent on June 4th. It would be, it would be probably beneficial to, to set the rules for their repayment. When they, you know, woke up this morning, they thought they had at least 90 days to pay their rent back.
Let's make that July 1st, then, at the expiration of the June 30th.
They have to start paying.
Right.
So, the prior.
Anyone previously.
Everyone previously exempt, not exempt, everyone subject to the order, allowed to take advantage of it, will have until July 1st to pay their rent, start paying rent, and then they'll have how long to pay the back rent?
Three months, you said?
Well, I don't, that's, that's your prior order.
That's what the, the motion was, six months here. Those who are, for, for those who are subject to our.
Previous.
Those who are exempt, the large companies, need to pay it all July 1st. Need to pay the back rent July 1st, and will have to.
That's the council direction.
I don't know, whatever is, I think it's important that we're clear on it more than.
Yeah, okay. I, I have another question.
Ms. Yes. Yes, goodness.
Did you say me?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know, we had another motion last week from Mr. Brotman on, I believe it was payback, and we put it at 25% a month. Can we do that on this motion as well? That if they have the three months to pay, they can pay 25, or what, 33% a month, so that they, you know, they know exactly what they're going to have to be paying, and it's.
I can accept that as an, as an amendment.
Okay, great.
Those are for the folks that are now becoming ineligible? Okay.
That are becoming ineligible?
Well, the larger companies that are becoming ineligible because we're expanding the exemption, that they would have three months, still have three months to pay it back, but they have to pay back a third, 33.33% every month until they're, they're caught up. Is that acceptable?
I don't think that's, is that what she meant?
Is that what you meant, Councilmember Devine?
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's what I meant.
You understood, Mr. Najarian?
Yes, that's what I understood, I'm okay with that.
So, this would be solely for the people that are exempt from the order?
Big companies.
And they would have to start repaying on July 1st, they would have to pay July 1st rent. And in addition to that, they would have to pay one additional month rent for the next three months. Well, let me take that back. So, they would pay July 1st rent, and then they would have to pay one-third of whatever the back rent obligation is on July 1st, and then the subsequent two months.
Well, really, it'd be, it'd be July 30th, August 30th, and September 30th, yeah. They'd have, because it's, it's, the last, the way we did it the last time for the residential was at the end of each quarter. So, it's the same concept, you'd have up to 30 days to pay that third.
Okay.
And then, so by the end of the, end of the 90 days, you've paid that entire amount.
Okay, that seems okay. And then for the ones that are, that are included in our.
In the order.
In the order, the ones that are getting this additional protection, they would have six months.
Correct.
From, basically.
End of the order.
The end of the order, which is June 30th at this point. They would have six months. Okay, then that's good, I'm good with that.
Let me just restate the part, the part of the order. The motion is good in terms of the exemptions. The motion is good in terms of the exemptions. Just want to state for those companies that are now exempt from the order by virtue of this motion, they would have 90 days to pay back, they would have to start paying rent on July 1st, they would have 90 days to pay back any back rent, they have to pay 33.33% every month, and that would be, that would be the motion, as I heard it. Would you make that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And then, I don't know, who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann? Yes. Devine?
Ms. Devine?
She said.
Your mouth, yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Nijarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Community Development Development regarding consideration of a temporary cap on commission fees charged by third-party food delivery applications, 9A resolution enacting an emergency public order imposing a temporary limit on the commission fees charged by third-party food delivery applications and businesses in Glendale.
Okay, Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, we'll go directly to Mr. Philip Blansofame, Community Development Director.
Mr. Blansofame.
Mr. Mayor, given the time, I will go through rather quickly the presentation. However, if there are questions, please slow me down and stop, and we'll do that. Now I'll just wait for the presentation. delivery fees on restaurants. We have found in our research that restaurants are paying anywhere between 12 and 30% of the cost of a meal for these services. Restaurants around the nation have expressed their concern with the level of fee, and this even goes back to early 2019. It has become more highlighted, if you will, with the pandemic, and the issue has been elevated to several local jurisdictions. Quickly, the cost of groceries is going up, as is the cost to prepare a takeout meal, the cost for to-go packaging. This at a time when people are limited in being able to dine in, and so these services are becoming more and more important for anybody that is trying to maintain a restaurant business. We have shown here the major apps that are active in this, Postmates, Grubhub, DoorDash, and Uber Eats. Similarly, we found in our survey that same companies are most prevalent here in Glendale. It's an important piece to understand the types of fees that are paid, and then I'll go through how this works, but to have this as some background. First, there's the menu item. What does it cost you for that meal? What is the restaurant charging to provide that meal? The service fee includes many different things. It can include a marketing fee that the restaurant pays to the service, to list their restaurant and their, and their menu, and take the order on there. It can include a service charge that would cover any credit card fees, marketing, as I said, or just commissions on getting that order. Taxes we are included, a delivery fee, that's for actually taking the food from the restaurant to the home, what you charge to deliver that. And then gratuities, those are something optional and generally on top, although they do have a place in this discussion. Average third-party fees, this is a Glendale survey that we did, 59 restaurants responded for us. Over 65% are saying that the total fees they're charged, 25% and above. You can see the breakdown there, 30%, more than 30% have a total 30% charge, and there's even more. Was that a question?
No, I think it was a.
Go ahead.
So, understanding how the application works is important for some questions and direction that we need. A restaurant will contract with one of these providers to upload their menu and their contact information onto their app. We, as consumers, would then go to that app, and we would search through and say, I want to get something from Cheesecake Factory, is somebody we've talked about today. I get something from Cheesecake Factory, and I'm using Uber Eats. I push that, I order from the menu, and Uber Eats then processes that order to Cheesecake Factory, and then they may also have a situation where Cheesecake Factory has contracted them to deliver that to the person. So I'm on the app, any one of those four or five, I'm looking through, I feel like, you know, American cuisine, I'm going to go to Cheesecake Factory, and I make my order. That's generally when a service fee will be charged, and by service fee, it could be any one of those charges. The consumer then can elect to pick it up or have it delivered. If I say I want it delivered, and the restaurant is contracted with that third party, they will then bring the food from the restaurant to my house, and I will pay a delivery fee. If I choose a pickup, no delivery fee, but you would have paid that, that marketing fee, what we've called the service fee.
Are they exclusive, Phil? Does a restaurant have an exclusive delivery service, or do they?
Some, some do. Some are on many different platforms. Some restaurants will have their own delivery service, some will even have their own order service, where you could call the restaurant and say, I want to get XYZ, and then they will contract with one of the service providers to deliver it. And in that case, there's just a delivery fee that is paid. And I can't seem to get us to move forward. In some cases, delivery service companies will mark up the meal price. Oftentimes, this is done in combination with the delivery charge, and my guess is, not to confuse, but just to kind of even out fees and make them not look so big in one category and so little in another. They may have a legitimate reason, we have not been able to detect what that is. However, it is a common practice where they will put together a delivery fee and a markup. You can see here, three large cities, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and New York. The first is there, where the markup, so if your dinner is $10, your meal is $10, in Los Angeles, they'll mark it up 6.49%, and so you'll pay $10.60 for that meal. They will combine that with their delivery fee. Now, you can see it kind of pretty close to reverse order, where Los Angeles has the lowest delivery fee but the highest markup. And again, the companies will use those in combination to achieve a desired percentage for their service. We have.
Once, I'm sorry. When you say report that with most markup, marked up, this is, like you ordered something is $10, then tax is added, and this will be added to that?
Your meal from the restaurant, let's say, is $10.
Right.
Then the service provider will mark up the cost of that meal by these percentages.
And then tax will add.
6.49%. So then you wind up paying, for that $10 meal, you wind up paying $10.65.
Yes. And then tax will be added.
Then tax on top of that. Many other cities in the last month or so have taken up this issue. San Francisco was the first to enact a 15% cap. To date, there's 14 cities, major cities that have taken some action. Nine cities have implemented a fee. Seven of those have set that fee, that max cap at 15%. The city of Los Angeles and Sacramento are considering those. I think it was just last week, the city of Los Angeles referred it to their city attorney to develop a, an ordinance for their consideration. Pasadena and Burbank are not considering this issue at this time. As you can guess, third-party applications, third-party service providers are against a cap. In New Jersey, there was some backlash. They adopted a 10%. That resulted in just a flat fee being charged to the customer. In Los Angeles, Postmates warned they would reduce service, and Grubhub has said they're not sure, but it may be that they have to scale back, and that would be job loss for other people, for some of their gig workers.
Yes, please. And when was that put into place?
Which one?
The, was it New Jersey, where you said that they threatened to pull out?
New Jersey was.
New Jersey, it was Jersey City.
I'm sorry, Jersey City. I said New Jersey.
Yeah.
Jersey City.
No, you said Jersey City. I changed it. But I mean, the, which was the one where they threatened to pull out? I'm just wondering, like, has enough time gone by to see whether they've acted on any of this, or is these just empty threats?
You know, I want to say it was Los Angeles. The Los Angeles Times should be in your, in your packet. There was an article where there was some, it wasn't, I'll have to look at the city. It's in the Los Angeles Times article where they talk about the pushback that they would pull out. I would tell you, if everybody in this area, certainly the city of Los Angeles, if they are looking to do it, it would be very difficult for a service provider to say, well, I'm going to pull out of the Los Angeles-Glendale region, based on any action you might take. What they have said is, they have threatened that, not threatened, they've made the statement, we may not be able to continue in business with these caps, and that's happened throughout the country.
Yet, Mr. Blansofame, they have not divulged what their business model is, correct?
You know, it, they have not, in the research that we have, we've not been able to find what that business model is for third parties. So I can't tell you what impact a cap would have on their business.
Nor are they, nor are they willing to tell us.
They, we didn't have the time to go and dig that up, but in our research, nobody else has been able to, and the articles we've read, they have been quite coy with that. Delivery fees, this again from our own survey, overwhelmingly saying that the delivery fees and the percentage is negatively affecting their business. This is Glendale Restaurants, overwhelmingly, same amount, support some cap. They were a little bit, they were a little bit more vocal on a lower cap, where, as we saw in Jersey City, it kind of backfired a little bit, in that other fees were put in to make up for it. We have a little more than half looking for a 10% cap, a little less than half would accept something 15, 20, or even more. Some things that we would like for the council to give us direction on and look for, and these are provisions that are made in your ordinance today, the level of cap. What percentage would you like to put on this service, if any? In the ordinance, or in the, in the resolution, you have some choices. One, a cap for delivery only, so I'll put a percentage on delivery, put a percentage on delivery and the other fees, you could put a percentage on the total amount. All fees may not exceed X percent. And that's, that's kind of the first two bullets there. Status of gratuities, what we found in some places, the gig worker, that is, the delivery driver, has a contract that says you get X dollars for making these deliveries for us on this night. In some cases, the third-party service provider has included gratuities in that amount. So we'll guarantee you $100 tonight. Let's say that the minimum wage they get gets them to $75, and then what are your tips? My tips were $30 tonight. Okay, we've met our total. Some jurisdictions have said the gratuity is the driver's, you can't take that to use as compensation some other way. I believe Seattle had done that in one other. So that's a choice for you, if you want gratuities to go 100% to the driver, or if they can be mixed with the total compensation. Enforcement strategy, we will tell you that if staff has to go enforce this, actively enforce this, we don't have enough people to do all of the things we are currently doing, and this as well. So we would, if that's what you wanted us to do, we would back off on other things that we're working on to focus on this. I will also say that I do not recommend that we hire more staff to do this, especially if it's going to be a temporary until we're through this pandemic. Another option is to allow, similar to the rental rights program, where we can advise, we can tell people, this is what our order means, but then we allow them, or we rely on them to do civil enforcement, and look at it that way. We could prosecute, we could put penalties in, and if we have that, we could prosecute, and Mr. Garcia would have to tell you that the strain on his staff, if we were to be aggressive with that. And then the last would be the length of the order. Do you want this to coincide with the emergency and then terminate upon termination of that, or would you like to see some other length of time? That completes our presentation. These are just the alternatives that you, that are listed in your staff report.
I just have a question myself. Do we know how many people are ordering in Glendale per day, let's say?
I do not. I cannot tell you that.
Do we have ballpark, I mean, remote number?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I will tell you that from the restaurants, the feedback we've received from the restaurants, that the delivery service is becoming more and more important, since that's all they can do, is pick up and delivery. So it is becoming more and more important for people that would normally eat out and not prepare food at home, but I could not tell you, I'm not sure how we would even go about learning that.
I see where it says Glendale Survey of Restaurants, so the restaurant owner, 81% they're in favor of some sort of, you know, ordinance. But this is, in my opinion, is too complicated. I mean, then how you will enforce it? I don't know where this is going to end up, that part of it, anyway, that's generally. Mr. Kusakian?
Thank you. I'm glad that staff brought this back, while we still, I believe our restaurants still need it. Initially, this issue, which I was unfamiliar with, I'd been using some of these third-party apps, I'm sure others have as well. I was completely unaware of the impact it was having on some restaurants until I spoke to a few restaurant owners, and I think it became highlighted during this pandemic. And I also want to thank you for actually doing the survey of the restaurants. It certainly helps. I've spoken to restaurant owners myself as best that I can, certainly not as many as the survey interviewed. But it is important, I think, that, given at a time when these businesses are struggling, when they are relying on the delivery model to keep their businesses afloat, that when some of them, their business has been reduced by 2/3% even with the Takeout Tuesday promotions and everything else that we're doing, as the cost of the products that they're using, the supply chains are getting further and further strained, and the cost of the products and materials that they're using to prepare their food is rising, that we provide them with. with some sort of assistance. You know, during the last great recession, when our automobile companies were on the verge of collapsing, the US government, the American people decided to intervene and give them a leg up to help them out, right? And we saw, at the time, it was a very controversial decision. I certainly wasn't completely sold on the idea. We know that sometimes, even if some things are too big to fail, you should let them fail, and, but on the other hand, there are other considerations. Now, we don't have automobile manufacturers in Glendale, but we do have a lot of restaurants that do need our help, and we can do something very simple. My suggestion would be to make all the fees charged capped at 20%. It's higher than some of the other cities are charging, and I don't think we need to do any active enforcement, enforcement on it, other than telling the restaurants, this is what the city has, and when you're negotiating with those companies, you have this on your side. Your city council has decided to get your back, so that you have something to negotiate with them with. Now, I would like to have this, at least for the duration of the pandemic, and possibly extend it a little bit more, maybe three months after, as they start to resume some of the business, as some of our other programs, such as Al Fresco Dining, maybe come online. And then afterwards, and quite honestly, if this pandemic had not happened, I wouldn't have asked for this, because, you know, it's a competitive, the restaurant business is very competitive, and people are free to decide and negotiate whatever they want with these tech companies and these third-party companies, and if they want to let them charge 50% initially, or for a period of time, just to get their name out there and get their product into the homes and mouths of, you know, you know, the community, so they can come back, that's up to them. But right now, many of them are struggling, and this is their only way of survival. So in as much, and 30%, I think we can all agree, is a large amount. $3 out of every $10 spent on a meal going into the pocket of some company that's not located in Glendale, and not even into the pockets of the drivers who may live in Glendale, and who are looking to do this as an extra job to make ends meet, is something that I can't tolerate or see continue. I want to see our businesses stay in business and survive and thrive long after this pandemic is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
How about 15? Is that too tight, you think? I mean, that's the problem, I don't know their business model, I don't know where the profit is, but-
I'm, I'm fine with 15 as well. I would just want it to be, if it, if that makes it consistent with the city of Los Angeles, that's fine as well. I just don't want it to be at the point where, and I'm curious about that research, that they say, well, we're not going to pull out. Now, I do agree with what Mr. Lanza-Fame said, that it would be very difficult for them to pull out of one of the largest markets in the country, if there is consistency. And again, this would just be for a temporary period.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Ms. Devine, please, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I don't, I don't use this service, never have, and probably now I never will. But when I read this staff report, I was absolutely appalled, absolutely appalled, that these, these, these apps, these distribution companies, delivery companies were, were charging 29% to 34% for their, and they had the ability to raise prices on the menu, they could actually charge $4,000 for a $4 salad. That, to me, is like unconscionable. So I am absolutely in favor of a, a cap, and I would like to see the cap be 15%, which seems to be the, the average or the norm, and I agree with Mr. Kusakian, I think we can extend it beyond the pandemic. So that, that, that's, those are my feelings on this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. But how it will be enforced? Is there, how it's going to be enforced?
Well, there are, there are methods. It's the violation of the, the resolution, there's penalties associated with it that include fines, and the municipal code, it's a municipal code violation to violate one of our emergency orders, but I think, again, we have to reiterate the point that Mr. Lanza-Fame made, and, and Mr. Kusakian made, it becomes sort of self, self-enforcing with the restaurants saying, wait a second, you can't charge me that. That's really the primary way that it happens.
So you mentioned that we are not going to enforce. Did you say that?
Yeah, I, I don't have any intention of assigning staff to this, and I don't know what staff would be able to do, other than to point to restaurants to the proper ordinance. I, I don't expect anyone to be going out and seeing what restaurants are using whatever service. I think it's just, you know, what we issue for the time being. We put it out there by email, social media, obviously the 59 restaurants that you have on the list now, and I'm sure among them, word will spread. Now, will there be some people that violate that? Sure, I'm sure they would maybe negotiate a different deal, but I, I don't know what our role would be in that, at that point. But for the ones that feel like their hands are tied, they can turn to the restaurants and say, I mean, to the delivery companies and say, hey, this is what you're only allowed to charge me for the period.
I have an idea.
This will be just a recommendation, then?
I have an idea, and it would work too.
Go ahead.
Permit a civil cause of action and throw in attorney's fees for the prosecution of it. Yeah, boy, those attorneys, put attorneys on something when there's a fees involved, they're all over it. Seriously, I mean, what's a, what's a small consumer going to gain by reporting a $5 overcharge? But if you get an attorney in there, and there's fees involved, they're going to, you know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Of course, they can go only after the big company.
Just throwing that out. Not that I know about that stuff.
Anyway, is there a motion, or is there more discussion?
Well, it's not for attorney's fees, but if I could, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Najarian's point, there's a provision under subsection or paragraph G, which says that there's a violation after the initial notice and seven-day cure period of covered establishment, meaning a restaurant may enforce this order by means of a civil action seeking damages and injunctive relief prevailing parties entitled to attorney's fees. So it's already in there. I'm sorry, the, the last part says attorney's fees? Oh, there you go. Oh, this will be-
So it will be more like, the customer should enforce the law themselves through the court?
Well, I mean, again, the customer will be forced just by telling, being able to tell the, the app, you can't charge me that, here's the order. And then, yeah, if it, if it comes to that, if the, the app company won't, won't comply, then there are remedies, civil remedies for the, for the restaurant.
So I'm saying, if there's a complaint, the customer should go to court and enforce the law. You will not get involved, city will not prosecute anybody, or they're not going to bring them to court. At least I want to-
Well, because they're saying they're not going to hire new staff-
Right.
-to enforce it, this way, the consumer who sees that they've been overcharged can take the, the, the delivery agency to court and have his attorney paid for, so, you know, who's going to hire an attorney for a $20 overcharge, let's say? No one's going to. But this way, if there's attorney's fees involved, when you beat them for overcharging you, they have to pay your attorney's fees as well.
Right. So I just don't want a city to get involved with this.
Right, to answer your question, we don't anticipate our office having to get involved in enforcement of this.
And, and I can only anticipate my code enforcement staff getting a call and saying, you know what, we have this order that, here, I'll send it to you, type of thing.
But then then, you recommend that go to small claim court, or big court, or whatever court. It's not going to come back to city attorney?
Correct.
Yes?
I won't refer anything to this.
It's questionable, the way you're not-
That's the idea, that's the idea.
Okay, if that's the case, I agree, but I just don't want to get involved with this $5 issue.
I don't think has weighed in yet.
What? No, no, I've been, I've been kind of waiting a little bit, because, anyway, I do have, I do have a lot of mixed feelings about this, although I am, just to put it up front, I will support it, so, I will support a cap. But, I mean, in general, I don't like price controls, especially when I don't understand the cost structure of an industry, and I don't know whether there's a market failure, and market failure is something I teach in my classes, so, you know, there are markets where, you know, they're not functioning, and, and it, it is warranted to come in and put in price controls. I just don't, I don't know if this market fits that. If it does at all, it's probably because it is, it is a heavily concentrated market, there are already some antitrust, I don't know if they're antitrust actions, but there's definitely antitrust scrutiny of, of this market, because there are like four big players, and two of them apparently are looking to combine. So, yeah, I mean, I think there's probably some evidence that, you know, this is a market that's not functioning, and if that's the case, then I'm comfortable with price controls, but I kind of feel like we're flying blind. So, I personally would much prefer a different approach, which would be an approach that involves disclosure. I think if we had a requirement that the, these apps actually disclose to the customer when they're placing an order, what all these charges are, there are probably a lot of people that just don't know, and, and, you know, if there was something that said, hey, you, you know, hey, you can call the restaurant, order from them directly, pick it up, and the restaurant saves 30%, that could change behavior. I, I like that as a, a better long-term solution to this problem, disclosure, but in the meantime, I think we're in a, we're in a situation where we might lose our restaurants, I don't want to lose them. So for the duration of this emergency, I don't think it's a big deal, and I'm, I'm fully in support, whether it's 15 or 20% or however you want to cut it.
Okay. We have 15% on the table, let's vote on this and get this over, because we spent too much time on this.
I'll make the motion to make, to put a cap on the delivery, not delivery fees, but all fees together combined by these delivery apps or third-party apps to be capped at 15% for the duration of the pandemic and for three months following.
If I can speak to that.
I'll second.
If I could speak to that, with respect, the current provision in the resolution has it just until the county officer, health officer terminates the prohibition on restaurants from helping dining services. Certainly, council can extend that to the, the life of our emergency, our state of emergency. I think to extend beyond that would actually require an ordinance, so my, my suggestion would be to have it now for the extension through the end of the city's declared emergency, and then also provide separate directions to bring back an ordinance, if that's what you want to do.
Yes, yes. And a question on this, would that mean that if the emergency is declared over, but then there's a second wave or some other pandemic, God forbid, we could trigger this again, or would that have to come back as a separate ordinance?
At that point, if we're in a state of emergency, the council can then just bring back another resolution at that time, when it declares the emergency, also bring back the resolution at the same time, to extend that order.
So just then, for the duration of the emergency order?
Can I ask a point of clarification?
One sec. Let's finish, Mr. Garcia, finish what you-
That was it, that was my line.
You're done? Okay, Mr.-
Well, I know some of the apps have like other services that they provide restaurants, you know, like special promotional opportunities, where they get their name on, higher on the list. Are we, I mean, it doesn't really make sense to include that, because that's all optional for a restaurant to say that they want to be part of a special promotion. So I would say, I just want to make sure our order is clear. I don't want one of these situations where we walk away and we can't answer any of the questions about how it works.
I, I believe, and Mr. Garcia, I think, is looking right now, but I believe the way the order reads, it's for the delivery of food, and excludes those other things, but, but includes service charges and whatnot. So whatever your fees are to deliver the food, to order and deliver the food.
So, right, so it covers the delivery, that's one fee, and then there also, it covers all the other fees, such as, just, they charge a fee sometimes just to process the order, that's, that would be covered, but anything that's sort of voluntary would not be covered.
Okay, okay. And then, are we saying anything about tips, or are we, we're going to pick the-
That was not my intention.
No.
Okay.
This is, we are going-
The simpler the better for me.
Okay.
Thank you. We spent too much time. Did you explain everything, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, if I could, just because there were a couple of, of sort of options in the, in the resolution, so where the motion would be 15% for all fees, it would last for the extent of our state of emergency, it would not address the, the tips or gratuities, and then there was a carve-out of formula restaurants, so that, we talked about in the prior discussion, there's a carve-out for restaurants that are, have basically 11 or more restaurants anywhere in the world. So that's currently written in there, council can take it out.
Mr., Ms. Devine, do you have a question or statement? You're done?
No, I'm just seconding the motion.
Okay. Mr. Kusakian, you moved the item?
Leave it in, yes.
Yes, and we have the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Adjournment.
Adjournment, okay. I have a motion to you, okay? With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 4:26 PM.
Do you want a break for five minutes, and then go into the afternoon, the 3 o'clock meeting, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know.
Please.
A break a little bit.